So we're going to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome to the public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community join us for our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under the regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 1046 as sequentia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 9, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 recording devices require that we inform those attending that this virtual meeting is being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJ SA 18A 38 8.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Would the Board Secretary please take a roll call?
Absolutely. Beth Baron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Jess Deutsch?
Here.
Betsy Baglio?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz?
Here.
Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Susan Kanter?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is D1, Adoption of Minutes for March 31, 2020. Can I have a motion?
They're moved.
Brian, second. Put your hands up when you make motions so we can see it. Second, Jess, thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the... Oh, why don't we do a roll call for that on everything because we're doing this electronically?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to our student board members' report. Mateo and Charlie. Hello.
Hello. So, obviously, there's not a lot to report. Our... The surveys that we had been working on have been... Like quarantine has put a stop to it, but we just wanted to just talk a little bit about what's still going on with student council and how remote learning has been going so far. So I think by now, most of the technology difficulties that were... That we were facing at the beginning of quarantine have kind of been figured out. And with some time to get used to the schedule, remote learning is actually going really well. From what I've heard, every teacher is holding regular meetings and communicating well with their students. And despite the big changes to the AP exams, I think people are still pretty well-prepared for them. I think that PHS is also doing a pretty good job not, like, cutting itself off from the students. Ms. Ligas is... I think she's... I think she's the one who started the new PHS Instagram account, and through that, she's held things like a Virtual Spirit Week, trivia competitions, and other interactive events. Student Council's meeting tomorrow again, I think, to discuss some further virtual projects. A few weeks ago, we made a video PSA that kind of just urged people to continue to, like, remember to mark themselves present and to take appropriate precautions for the coronavirus. I think if there is any problem, it's probably the attendance. I don't think it's, like, hard or anything to continue to mark yourself present, but it's something that a lot of people are... It's easy to forget, and I think that some people have kind of given up on that. But I think, like, I am now getting regular emails from the main office reminding me to mark my attendance, so hopefully that's helping. And as for community service, all of the community service groups at PHS are... Have been directed to plan, like, online service projects and to hold virtual meetings so that the sophomores can continue to gain hours. But otherwise, I think remote learning's going pretty well, given the circumstances.
Charlie, basically, covered most of it. So yeah, there was a meeting for us seniors yesterday for student council. I was not able to make it. We have one tomorrow. Also, a little cool thing that I think student council's kind of promoted is there's a page on Instagram that's honoring all the seniors by posting where they're going, what they plan to study, and some of their academic achievements throughout the years at PHS. So that's just a little great thing that we're trying to do and stay connected while we're all here in quarantine. And yes, and I believe there's also a... In terms of other events that student council is holding, in terms of prom, there's a tentative date for June 15th. Again, that's all only if we come back to school and seeing what the situation is in terms of the virus. Yeah. And that's basically our report.
So can I ask... Thank you for coming. How are you guys doing? This is your senior year. You... It kind of was cut short as far as, you know, being on campus. How are you doing? And how are your classmates doing? And what do you... What can the district do to help you salvage some of what should be a celebratory time?
Well, I think postponing events rather than canceling them is really important. From what I've heard, people are... Like, of course, everyone's upset about prom and a lot of these different events that, like, take place at the end of senior year, but I think the biggest one is graduation. So I think if, like, we can't salvage anything, or if we can only salvage, like, one thing, graduation is definitely most important. I think I heard somewhere that there's, like, a plan to postpone, like, in case school does get canceled until the end of the year, there's a plan to postpone it until later date. I guess there's different options being considered, but I think that's the most important thing. Like, if we can have anything, it would be graduation.
I believe Ms. Baxter actually had a plan. So yeah, I was at the meeting yesterday, but I think she had a plan to possibly have some of the students or the... Have different time slots where the students can be filmed, receiving their diploma. I'm not sure... Charlie could probably back this up if he was at the meeting, but um... And then kind of clip together a whole film that'd be set in our graduation day with each of the students just, you know, going up onto the stage and just getting their moment. So that's a great thing that Ms. Baxter's trying to do right now in terms of helping us seniors.
And just so you know, there is a committee that's been put together that will be meeting on Thursday to discuss exactly that, kind of what will happen with graduation. So I think there are still a lot of options on the table. We'll probably no more, as with everything else, in the next week or two. Having a senior myself, and Beth I know as well, I don't think anybody else does on the Board. It's obviously near and dear to all of us, and, you know, I feel for you guys having this... Having to go through this in your senior year. It stinks. I mean, there's no other way around it, and I'm glad you guys are coping as well as you have been, given the circumstances.
Thank you.
And we have been talking about it in our various committees, and, you know, where we can, the Board is very supportive of postponement because we realize that this is a seminal moment in your lives. The decision won't be up to us, but we can, you know, put in our two cents. So I hope something can be done to help commemorate your achievements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
And then I go, I think our next item will be... It's a consent item, is the HIV report. We'll move through that and address it when we get to the consent. And then I will just make a few remarks. Thank you for joining us tonight. Like our students, we have gone fully virtual, and we request your patience as we do our Board business in this new medium. I'd like to frame our work tonight by noting that, like nearly every other aspect in our modern world, we have social-distanced and upended the way we do school in Princeton for one very simple reason: to save lives. Governor Murphy reported today that while New Jersey's curve of hospitalizations and deaths is thankfully bending in the right direction, just yesterday, New Jersey recorded 402 additional deaths, bringing the total to 6,442 New Jersey residents who have been lost to the coronavirus. Closer to home, Mayor Lempert's most recent daily briefing reported 112 positive cases of coronavirus in Princeton, with 48 being currently active and regrettably eight deaths. Our hearts go out to the families and friends of those who have been lost to this pandemic. We also express gratitude to the healthcare and other essential workers who are keeping us safe and supplied. At PPS, we appreciate our transportation and custodial staff who each week pack and deliver meals to our over 500 students on free and reduced lunch, and to our friends at Send Hunger Packing Princeton who have made... Who have stepped up to provide these families with dinners and weekend meals. And of course, our staff, our administrators, our parents, and students have continued to show extraordinary ingenuity, flexibility, and patience in adjusting to remote learning. The situation is far from perfect for many of our students, and we will need to devote additional resources to remediating learning gaps for some of them when this is over. But across the Board, we are grateful for the enormous spirit and courage shown by our Princeton Public School learning community. So what comes next? Today, Governor Murphy announced his Governor's Restart and Recovery Commission, which is being co-chaired by Princeton's own Dr. Shirley Tillman, together with Merck Chairman and CEO Ken Frazier, and it includes other smart people like Ben Bernanke, the former Chair of the Federal Reserve. We look forward to their leadership. Tonight, we will hear from Superintendent Steve Cochran, who has a restart committee of his own to help us navigate what the next steps will be... Look like for the Princeton Public Schools. As for our Board, we have met almost daily over the past few weeks, either as a whole to interview a talented group of candidates for interim superintendent, or in smaller groups to continue our committee work focused on student achievement, building renovations, financial resiliency, personnel decisions, and policy updates. Later tonight, you will hear about the details of this work in our committee reports, and will learn about our budget in a comprehensive presentation by our business administrator. We are navigating uncharted waters together. With our mission of preparing our students for lives of joy and purpose at the forefront, our Board is committed to maintaining continuity and stability through new challenges and transitions. We are planning collaboratively for the resumption of in-person learning. We are engaging with experienced candidates as we seek to renew our district leadership. We are talking regularly with the municipality and other community partners, and reaching out to our counterparts in neighboring districts. We are making the most of the resources and relationships that we have, and considering outside-of-the-box ideas to prepare for the financial uncertainty that is no doubt ahead, given our state's financial crisis. We don't yet have all the answers, but I'm grateful to be working with a deeply talented, experienced, and committed group of Board colleagues and administrators who are devoting their days to find the answers together on behalf of our students. I'll close by mentioning how you can help and where you can find help if you need it. All community members, please fill out your census forms. Our federal school funding and political representation is based on this information. For our staff, parents, and students, please stay informed and let us know how you are doing, what's working, what isn't, what do you need. Please reach out via the chain of command, your children's teachers, principals, caseworkers, supervisors, and the Board. If you're experiencing financial hardship and would like to apply for free and reduced lunch for your children, the forms are available in English and Spanish on our website. If you have other needs or would like to volunteer, please check out the PrincetonCOVID.org website, which is full of helpful information. And of course, if you'd like to know more about PPS and the good things happening in our schools, even virtually, please check out the PPS website and the social media sites for updates. Thank you. Steve, I think it's on to you.
Wonderful.
Well, I think Jess does a statement of gratitude first, sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, Beth. And just very briefly, I'm gonna... I'm gonna underline some of the points of gratitude Beth has already expressed because I think we can never express it enough, even though we're running through a lot of business. And gratitude really might be the single most powerful method we have for increasing our well-being at this time, in addition to social distancing, and it impacts our emotions, our relationships, our learning, and our health. And so we put it into our Board meetings before this crisis was even upon us, but I think it serves us now more than ever. Gratitude reminds us that even in what seems to be the darkest of times, there is still room for joy. So I want to express our Board's continued gratitude to everyone who's been involved in food distribution in the community during this difficult time. That includes all of our partners, our staff, especially our Transportation Department, and those who continue to give feedback so that we can adjust and evolve as we continue to do our part in an effort to be a compassionate community. Also, I want to give thanks to all of our teachers, our staff, parents, and students, all of whom continue to show creativity and kindness and resilience that really inspires all of us to do the work that we do every day, and as we manage through this unprecedented time. And finally, I just want to express deep gratitude to a member of Steve's team, Elizabeth Collier, whose grace and effective communication during this episode has helped us to keep the community informed and inspired, and that's been more important than ever. Thanks also to the amazingly talented interns who are doing such a great job of sharing the good stories around the district that keep us going. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Jess. Thanks to our tech team for helping us figure out this new technology. We're grateful. We wouldn't be meeting without you, so we really appreciate it. Steve?
Thanks, Beth. Jess, thank you so much for that wonderful statement of gratitude. I've said before, gratitude is stronger and spreads much faster than this virus, and it's the thing that will get us through it. And so I do want to express my gratitude to the Board for all of their hard work on their various committees that you'll hear about tonight, and in preparing the budget that will be focused of the meeting, most of the meeting. My comments will carry the theme of gratitude, and I will also ask for people's forbearance as I try and figure out how to do some things remotely. So this is... Matt has allowed me to share my own screen. I appreciate him giving competence in me to do that effectively. I will try it now. All right, can you see that? Are we people able to see the...
You got it.
Okay, great.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you. So what I want to talk about tonight, I really want to celebrate, continue the celebration of the spirit of our staff and students. I want to build on what Jess said, thank our communication interns, talk a little bit about the food distribution that we did last week and what we did today, celebrate some unsung heroes who have been a part of that effort, honor our Assistant Superintendent, whose retirement is on the agenda tonight. And then, as Beth noted, we have begun planning for reopening, and I want to share with the Board and the community the steps that we are taking at this point, and some of the priorities and approaches that are guiding us. The picture you see to your right is our art teacher at CP, and sort of "we can do it" spirit, I think, is one that all of our staff have tried to convey to each other and to our kids and to the community overall. This was a project that was called Remaking the Masters, and a museum project that actually was done throughout the country, and our CP, our teacher picked up on it, and you can see some of the work of our kids. And it's just remarkable to me that during this remote learning time, we have found the ways to be really creative, resilient, and expressive. And so here are a couple of what our kids have done, and then I was particularly fond of this rendition of Van Gogh's Starry Night because it takes advantage of some clothes thrown on the floor. I've never seen them done quite so creatively. My wife has not yet bought the line that I'm working on an art project with the socks that she wants me to pick up, but thank you to our students and to our teachers for these kinds of projects that, you know, continue to inspire our kids even during these difficult times. And thank you to our communication interns. So we did something different this year in our attempt to tell our story even more fully. We went out to Rider University, and we hired three interns, Paige Taylor and Chloe. Our pictures are here, and their majors are below their names, you know, from filmmaking and TV, public relations, communications. So we interviewed a number. We hired these three, and they have been, you know, working right alongside Elizabeth Collier, who I had a shout-out earlier, working 10 hours a week and really trying to tell the story, the positive things that are happening in our schools and in our community that involve our teachers and our students, and they've been doing it through video text. And a lot of the social media posts that you have seen go up have been the work of these three interns. And again, thank you to Elizabeth Collier, who has... They've come together in this tiny office that they've used to, and I guess they're meeting remotely, but it's sort of the newsroom for PPS, and they've been telling some wonderful stories. We're grateful to them, and they continue their work even when school closed for them, and they were home and working remotely. So we're grateful to them, and they are... I guess their school year is ending. Maybe we'll get some of them back next year. I think some of them are juniors. Quick update on food distribution. So last week, we did something remarkable. Actually, Shup did something. Send Hunger Packing Princeton. We've been talking with them for a while about what we call the missing meal, which is dinner. And Shup, for the last eight to 10 years, has been partnering with the Princeton Public Schools to provide meals on the weekends, breakfast and lunch on the weekends, for our students. The school district, these are our students who qualify for the federal lunch program, about 500 of those students in the district currently, and we, as a district, provide breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday, but Shup stepped in years ago and provided meals on the weekends, the breakfast and lunches, but the dinner was the missing meal. And during this time of increased economic and food insecurity, they took the very bold step of saying, "Let's see if we can get dinners out to our families." And so last Tuesday, we did a delivery of some shelf-stable items, a bag of those, and then a bag of seven dinners that were made by a company that we're contracting with in Pennsylvania. Some of those, some of the menu items, Spanish pork over rice with beans and corn, chicken stir-fry with mandarin oranges, pasta and meatballs with mixed veggies, beef stroganoff with cooked peas. So it was a different meal, different dinner every night, and so that worked wonderfully last week, and we tried it again today. So today, we are doing our distribution weekly now, and so every Tuesday, we send out 14 buses across the district to serve meals to 500 students. And we gave today a bag of five breakfasts and five lunches for each of our students, and then we also provided a bag of four family dinners for our students. And I'll show a few more pictures. The slide, the picture here to the right is the chef salads being made in the company in Pennsylvania. They're all being made fresh, and then they were made Monday and then shipped to us first thing Tuesday morning and then out to families. We continue to refine our distribution and improve our distribution, and we're grateful for the input that we receive from those who are involved in the process on the district level and those in the community who continue to help us shape the very best program we can and quality program. So we had a question initially about refrigeration. Was there... If we're giving items that do require refrigeration and they're not shelf-stable items, is there enough refrigeration for some of our families? And so we're actually grateful. We reached out to Princeton University, and the university said, "You know, we might have some refrigerators that our students would typically use in their dorms, who are not being used." And so we got about 14 of those refrigerators. The rec department drove over to the university and now has those housed, so we do have refrigerators, small refrigerators, available for any families who may benefit from having those. We also, as we were doing our distribution through our 14 mobile bus sites, we quickly realized that there's some families who, because of illness in their own house, may be quarantined or illness themselves can't leave, and so we have now been dropping off meals to those families and making that important accommodation. And so just a shout-out to Send Hunger Packing Princeton for their vision and their hard work and contribution to Nutriserve, which is our food service company, to Kaylee Dixon, who is our food service director and just a force for good in this whole process, delivering food herself and making it all happen, to our community liaisons, Lenora, Lilliana, and Trinidad, and to our Transportation Department, and I'll talk about them in just a moment. Here are some other pictures that show the salads now in the bags and now in these containers. This is how they were shipped to us. There are all the containers containing the bags of food, and Kaylee is there in one of the masks, and some of our transportation folks getting ready to load those onto the buses, which you see happening here. And then the buses are lined up, ready to drive off and deliver them, laid out on tables in front of... This is at CP, I believe. And you can see the bags of different meals for our students. And there's a delivery station. This is taken at CP. So I just... I really just want to celebrate some of the unsung heroes, and Jess referred to our transportation folks who, during this crisis, they have been unbelievable in helping to load the food and helping to distribute the food, and they know our kids. They... We asked them to volunteer to help. We have 25, 26 drivers. We have more than a dozen bus aides. They are all eager to help, and they will often call up our Director of Transportation, Donna Braden, and say, you know, "When is the delivery? Can I help?" If we can use them, we do. If we can't, then we don't. So we're rotating through our staff, but they are... They care so deeply about our kids that they want to be a part of this process. And two years ago, I think the Board honored them after the November 15 storm, when they stayed late, and they stood in front of the Board and just said, "We love kids. We love our kids." And that's the motivation behind the work that they're doing, and we just wanted to honor them tonight, as well as their Director, Donna Braden. And in the theme of gratitude, I am privileged to be able to speak tonight about someone that I have known for more than 25 years. Annie and I go way back, and this is a picture of her taken in her office. I guess this is at Littlebrook, right, Annie? Looks like you might be back at the Littlebrook, but in her office now at Valley Road, Annie has a sign, and it's a quote from Shakespeare's Midsummer Night's Dream, and it says, "She may be little, but she is fierce." And Annie's ferocity, it's fueled by a desire to do what's best for kids. And so I just... I have a few remarks that I prepared, and I just would like to share those with the Board and with the staff and with our entire community to honor this person who has been with us for 17 years in varying capacities. So last Wednesday, Annie Kosick, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, announced that after 17 years with the Princeton Public Schools, she will be retiring at the end of June. The next day, Alicia Keys debuted her song, "Good Job." If you haven't heard it, give that a listen. The song has been hailed as... The next day, Alicia Keys debuted her song, "Good Job." If you haven't heard it, give that a listen. The song has been hailed as an anthem for all those who are working creatively behind the scenes, not only to help us come through this crisis, but to come through it stronger and healthier. The song begins with the words, "You're the engine that makes all things go." And it is in that spirit that I want to celebrate the legacy of Annie Gonzalez-Kosick and ask all of us to help ensure that that legacy continues. Many of you may know Annie in her role as Assistant Superintendent, a position she's held for the last three years. Many of you know her from her days as the principal of Littlebrook Elementary School, which under her leadership became a blue ribbon school. Some of you may not know Annie at all, except as a name at the top of the Princeton Public School Organization chart or at a name, a name at the bottom of recent emails explaining and affirming all of our efforts with remote learning. As I said before, I have known Annie for 25 years, both here in Princeton and in our days together as colleagues in the Holuba Valley School District. She is a force and she is truly one of the most remarkable educators with whom I have ever worked. Annie is motivated by two passions. She rejoices first and foremost in her relationships with students, staff and families. She also relishes in the challenge of changing cultures, programs and systems. Her efforts are always driven by doing what is right for kids. And her efforts are always collaborative. She listens and then she leads. The successful implementation of remote learning for the entire district during the extraordinary circumstances of a global pandemic may be the collaborative effort that will culminate Annie's career at PPS. But it is only part of what she's accomplished in her time as Assistant Superintendent. Under Annie's leadership, the district has established a process of program review for all subjects, engaged in a comprehensive update of all curriculum now accessible in an electronic database, implemented a new school-wide enrichment program, revised the elementary school report card, and implemented a summer academy for professional development by teachers for teachers. Perhaps most significantly, Annie has overseen an incredible effort to provide professional development related to equity with a sustained focus on culturally responsive teaching and differentiated instruction. Annie's legacy will be in the quality of our curriculum, the diversity of instruction in our classrooms and in the educators, administrators and staff who will continue to focus on improving both. Bottom line, all of our children have been impacted by her work and will continue to be. "I've always loved a good challenge," Annie wrote in her retirement letter to PPS staff as she acknowledged the work they had done together. "All of those staff now stand ready to face the next challenge of reopening our schools, whenever that might be." Annie and I are currently working with an amazing and growing team of people to plan for that reopening and will continue to do so right through June 30th. And come July, Annie and I will step back in confidence, knowing that our district's values of care, innovation and partnership will continue to fuel the engine that makes all things go. The Princeton Public Schools will be in good hands as we face the future. It will be in the hands of those who reach out in collaboration and with sleeves rolled up, ready to do what's right for kids. That is the legacy Annie leaves. I'm grateful to Annie and to all of you who will continue her legacy. Annie, thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve, very much.
So we, the board may have a chance to say a few things about Annie if they'd like when we come to that point in the agenda, when we have to officially accept the retirement letter. And I know it was not an easy one for Annie to write. But I want to conclude my remarks tonight by talking about the restart, as Beth referred to it, the way in which we are organizing to safely reopen our schools. So the reality is that we need to plan for that eventual reopening, whenever that might be. And the timing is uncertain. Our governor has, at this point, said that schools will remain closed through May 15th. We'll get more guidance, I'm assuming, in the next couple of weeks. So it may be May or June, it may be the summer, it may be the fall. I think 45 out of 50 states at this point have either recommended or officially made the decision to remain closed through the spring and open only in the fall. And there's a possibility that we may be in and out of remote learning and that it may go actually beyond the fall, we don't know. So we are trying to prepare for all possibilities. And we had an initial meeting yesterday of our reentry leadership team. I will speak about the membership on that team and the process that they are undertaking to ensure that we have a wide range of options and plans as we think about reopening. But at first, just a quick note about guidance and sort of our priorities as we consider this important next step. The federal guidance has really come to us at this point through a three-phase plan from the CDC. Phase two of that plan is where schools would reopen. And the criteria for opening have to do with at least a two-week period of substantial reduction in cases and room at hospitals to accommodate sick patients. The phase two also includes the requirement of social distancing, as well as a statement that groups of, there shouldn't be gatherings of groups larger than 50. So the way schools open, when we have to maintain social distancing and have to be cognizant of not gathering in groups larger than 50, there's a lot of work to be done for us to be able to figure that out. As of yet, we don't have guidance from the state. We are hopeful that that will be forthcoming. But as a district, we are moving ahead. And we are going to put together the best plans that we can. And you'll see that in our scope of activities that if we have to advocate for changes in legislation or policy to allow for what we believe the right plans to happen, then that will be part of our process as well. As we think about reopening our schools, our priority is on health. It's on the physical health of our students and staff and our community. It's on their emotional health and it's on their academic health. And it's also our value of equity is overlaid with that focus. So we know that this remote learning has had disproportionate impact on some of our students in terms of their emotional health, their physical health and their academic health. And so we want to be cognizant of that, do assessments and provide supports and resources where they're needed most. Categories for consideration. So when we met yesterday as a team, we began to look at some of the key elements that were related to our priorities. So health and hygiene protocols were first and foremost, began to think about that. And we are going to be developing subcommittees that will be looking at all of these areas of consideration, these categories for consideration and developing protocols and questions related to them. So simple things in terms of health, what will be, will there be testing that we have to do as a district? As part of the regular immunizations, will antibody testing be something that we have to consider? Will we have to be taking temperatures, thermometers? Will they be needed for staff or for students? What will our cleaning protocols be? Will we have students and staff needing to wear masks? Those are all questions that we will need guidance on and need to be answered. The social emotional health of our school community is paramount. All of us have been through trauma with the crisis that we're undergoing. Some of us are going to be more affected than others. We need to sort of, we need to assess where we are. We need to support our students and our staff as they come back, some eagerly, some with trepidation. And we also need to find ways to inspire. I've always said that schools need to be beacons of hope and that's never been more important now. And so as we think about launching a new school year under very different circumstances, we need to find the ways to inspire our kids and our staff and to bring them together. And so that's part of our thinking and planning. And we've got a team that will be coming together to look at ways to do that. We have to look at our academic health. We have focused on key standards in our teaching, recognizing that for some students at this point, we're all trying to get by. And we know that the learning levels are not going to be as great as they would be if we were in an ordinary school year. And so we need to assess where our kids are and find ways to support them with additional resources. And that is, that's part of a team that Annie will be taking a look at in terms of the assessments and the supports. But then as we think, we have to think about how will learning take place when students return? And if we have social distancing in place, then one of the big questions is what are, how many students per space? We don't have guidance on that, so we need to be thinking through, on our buses, for example. We have 54 passenger buses, three students to a seat. Are we going to be able to continue to do that? Many of the, much of the guidance or the articles that have been written as to what other schools are doing in other countries and we are following that very carefully. We're following what's happening in Denmark, in Germany, in Ireland. We're looking at other states around the country that are beginning to think this through as well. And they're looking at the possibility of fewer students per classroom, 10, 12 students. How do we make that happen? Cafeteria. If we can't have gatherings larger than 50, then we have to think about other places for students to eat. And it could be hallways and locker rooms and other areas where we really have to be thinking about students per space, which leads to the other question around schedule. Many of the districts that are doing this planning right now are contemplating a daily schedule or a weekly schedule that may be different than what we've seen in the past. So if you want to have fewer students in the building at any one time, we may have to think about split sessions of morning or afternoon or split days where some students are coming in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, others on Tuesday and Thursday, and then they switch the following week. And remote learning will continue. So there's no scenario that I can envision where 3,900 students and 800 staff just come back to our buildings and learning happens as it did in the past. I think that initially, we are going to have to have some kind of hybrid of remote learning and classroom. And so those are other questions. Some countries, in thinking this through, have brought the younger students back. As in Denmark, they brought the elementary school students back first. In Germany, they're bringing the high school students back first. We have to think that through. Who, if we are phasing in our students, is it the younger? Is it those who might need related services like occupational therapy or physical therapy? What about special areas? Do, you know, kids maybe take their science, their social studies, their math, their language arts remotely and then come in for art or music? So these are all ideas that we are just considering at this point. As I said, continuation of remote learning, either in a hybrid fashion for some, certainly for select students who may be immune compromised or for staff who maybe have a spouse at home who has a compromised health condition or they're in a category where they're concerned about their own health. We have to think that through. Food and nutrition, we have to maintain our provision of meals for our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. We have to take a look at our sports and extracurricular activities. We're waiting for guidance on that. We have not yet received that from the state organization. But, you know, does football not happen in the same way? Maybe it's, you know, or does fencing and tennis are more remote, but football and wrestling have more contact? What are the distinctions going to be made? How can we find ways to make the sports meaningful and engaging for our students? So our athletic director is pulling a group together to look at that. Staffing questions, support of our staff. Do we, are we going to need more substitutes? Are we going to need more staff if we split sessions? So there are a number of questions around that. We are looking at, you know, do we expand the calendar year and have school longer to be able to accommodate more learning? So these are really important questions that we have to consider. And as I mentioned before, state regulations and district policies may have to be adjusted to fit the new norm that all of us in the country and certainly in the state are going to be experiencing. And so there may be some advocacy on the part of the administrative team and the board to ensure that the regulations match what we believe is best for our students and our staff. And then we have the question around closing out the current year, whenever that may happen. If we're allowed to come back and I maintain hope with Charlie and Mateo that we can and that I can hand them their diplomas in person on that stage and listen to the applause of thousands of people. But if not, then we need to think about ways to do that remotely and still have it be meaningful. And we need to think about the practical closing out of student lockers and staff who have belongings on their desks. And how do we make allowances for people to get those sorts of things? So we have a really wonderful group that has come together to think about that. I think actually maybe more than 21, I might have miscounted, it could be closer to 25. Essentially, all of our central office staff, the superintendent, curriculum instruction, special services director, Mike from HR, Matt, our business administrator, our director of facilities, Dave Harding. We're all on this team and on this call. All of our building principals are now going to be part of it. Our supervisor of school counseling, Christina Donovan, is going to be essential and she'll be leading the task force that looks at this social emotional learning and supports. Our athletic director, our supervisor of visual and performing arts, looking at, you know, how can we do performances differently with the social distancing requirements? We're fortunate to have our PREA co-presidents, John and Renee. We're on the call yesterday and will continue to be involved. Our director of technology, that's going to be a really key area for us as we continue to do remote learning for all of our students potentially and also ensure that we have the technological resources we need in school. Elizabeth, as our communications coordinator, was on the call. Our school safety specialist, Tim Charleston, who's been really trained in looking at crisis management and prevention. And he's in touch with Office of Emergency Management with best practices. We're fortunate to have two of our board members, Susan Cantor from the facilities committee and Daphna joins us with representation on student achievement and equity, looking at how we are managing all of this and what the board's role can be. Back to the policy and the advocacy piece. And we have Jeff Grosser, our municipal health officer, who serves on this. Our nurse coordinator, I forgot to mention her, Lisa Goldsmith, who coordinates our nurses. And obviously, the whole physical health of our staff and students is going to be critical to any step forward with the safe return of our kids. We are going to have this, the reentry leadership team will be meeting every two weeks until we're ready to launch. And then, as I mentioned before, we have subcommittees that are based on these categories that will be pulling in different members of our learning community to develop plans and look through potential problems and come up with questions and ideas. So we had our first meeting yesterday. Our next meeting is May 11th. And I will look forward to reporting back to the board and the community after that meeting. Any comments or questions from the board? None? My final slide, just to sort of reiterate what has been said all along, that we're in this work together. And schools are, they're not buildings, they're the people in them. And I think that we have shown that throughout this. And I think that we have um shown that uh throughout this, this, this period of remote learning that, that, that school is the relationships that we have with, with each other. And in some ways, those are even stronger than they were before. And so we're grateful to um our, our, our staff, our students, our families, our administrators who have worked so hard to make sure that um our schools stay intact and those relationships stay intact. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any other questions from the board? Or we move on? I think our next item, can you hear me? Am I there? Yep, hello. Thank you for that, Steve. That worked well. You can all see that. I think that brings us to the um budget presentation, the public hearing on the budget. Matt, you're sharing your screen now. Thank you.
I am attempting to. There we go. So um, thank you. It's always hard to follow Steve because he's such an amazing speaker. We're going to miss him. This was my first budget cycle here in the district and I would be remiss without thanking um everyone I've worked with, especially though uh Jen McCallie, my comptroller and right hand. She, I was her third boss in the last fourteen months and she's very patient. She was awesome to work with and adapted well. We adapted well together. Just give me a second while I. So uh, we'll start with the uh outline of budget presentation, uh mission statement. Of course, the dreaded COVID nineteen budget update, uh priority-based goals, budget goals and accomplishments, uh budget calendar, school tax overview and tax impact, uh operating uh or general fund, as I call it. And then uh questions from the public will follow the presentation. Uh board comment um prior to that. Mission of the Princeton Public Schools is to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative and compassionate citizens of a global society. And um for what I've seen so far, I think the district really is true to its mission statement. We've had a lot of strategic planning goals. Uh we're currently nearing the end of those goals. One of the main overarching goals, and uh we've tried to accomplish that um with this year and make strides towards that, I should say. It's a continual process always is uh the goal of equity, ensuring that every child achieves their highest potential by removing barriers and providing supports. I think it's a fantastic uh goal and we should always strive towards that as educators in a school district. So um we've all heard a lot about COVID nineteen. I actually try not to watch. I think I've only watched about two hours of CNN. I try to get my news in the uh, I try to read it. But uh we are extremely sensitive and empathetic towards all of those who have uh and will suffer from the virus and the economic crisis that is currently unfolding. While this is a budget discussion, I think that remains at the top of the uh importance here. Um there's been an extremely rapid and severe uh amount of job losses, really unprecedented. Putting us into a very uh sharp and hopefully uh V-shaped with a quick out of the recession. Many, many people right now are in very precarious financial situations and we are aware of that. In response to this, uh we've had uh impromptu finance committee uh meeting with robust discussion and very uh unanimously have decided to reduce uh our general fund tax levy by two hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars down to a one point seven five percent increase from two point oh seven percent. Now, we know this uh is not a huge uh effect on the individual taxpayers, but it's very important. And you'll see later on in, in the charts, uh we're dedicating uh the future here to educating our students uh as efficiently and effectively as possible. So one of the things we're talking about with, with COVID is a tremendous amount of uncertainty right now as a school district and related to our budget. The state, um and I believe it's still the first state, uh Governor Murphy, who was uh a chairman of Goldman Sachs, a CEO, I believe, of Goldman Sachs, uh has a unique idea to extend the state's fiscal year by three months, hoping to catch some of that upturn that we, that I talked about, a V-shape. They talk about coming out of the recession, so hopefully sharp and then a, a quick uptick. So to try to extend an extra three months and capture some revenue that we won't be able to capture in the traditional June thirtieth fiscal year. But with that, he will be revising his fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget message. He has until August twenty-fifth to deliver that. February twenty-fifth was when he gave the original um budget message and that is what we are basing uh this budget adoption on. We have not been given uh an extension of time to adopt our budgets here at the local school district level. We have to maintain the original timeframe. So what, what does this mean for our budget? Uh, you know, some of the good news, I guess if you can call this good news, um is that we should have some quote-unquote net savings in the current year budget, uh mostly uh from, from um supplies at this point. Although certain things we're going to have to spend a little extra on. Some things are still unknown. We're constantly uh, I shouldn't say constantly. We are uh right now starting to negotiate. We have commenced negotiation with uh our main transportation coordinator, contractor, our busing company. We have no idea how much our overall savings are going to be at this point. But I always pay attention to the nickels and dimes. We're developing contingency plans um surrounding the potential loss of state revenue. We don't know what that's going to look like. Um we are beginning to develop contingency plans to meet those to meet those potential losses. We also uh, as dealing with the state in the past, we don't necess, we won't necessarily know if it will be a one-year loss, which we'll react to quite differently than if we have a, if we feel that it's a higher probability of a, a continual loss. Back in two thousand and ten, there was a sharp drop-off in state aid. And then the following year, there was a rebound of a significant portion of that for many districts in the state. So it's always a little bit guesswork, but that's one of the reasons why it's so important for a school district to have some fund balance available, which is essentially cash in the bank to make it through challenging times. So priority-based budgeting, I discussed this previously. It's a multi-year process that requires cultural change throughout the district. And I think we have a really, really excellent uh team here in place uh to, to adapt to this. There's a lot of communication between administration, uh school administrators, budget managers. So we made a lot of progress. We try to start off as uh flat, uh not just adding a percentage to our budget. We try to analyze everything that we're spending on and how we could spend our money more efficiently. You know, with that said, uh we spend a little over three-quarters of our budget on personnel-related expenses. But this budget process uh has to be consistent with our values. I discussed that earlier. I've been tremendously impressed here with the working towards providing uh a greater sense of equity across our student base. And uh this includes collaboration and transparency. Another thing I've been extremely impressed with here are open committee meetings. It certainly provides a, a challenge for administrators. Uh I wasn't used to that. But it's, it's great to, to activate such a vibrant, intelligent community as well as our uh very uh intelligent board. And they're constantly challenging me and, and helping me grow as a, as a financial leader for, for this school district. So our, the focus, one of the main focus this year was uh expenses outside of the classroom. Trying to reduce, uh we really, we didn't look at headcount. We're looking at, you know, where we can spend on supplies more efficiently, working on uh purchasing, cutting back a little bit on travel, really trying to do things much more efficiently. So I was just talking about, um so this budget, uh one of the major accomplish, accomplishments, I should say, of the first year of the party-based budgeting is um not having a reduction of force. Decreases will be based on n- natural attrition. So we have a projected, so when I say projected, what our estimate is for next year of enrollment growth of five point three percent over uh the last two years through next year. And with that, uh this budget presents a uh four point four-two percent general fund tax levy increase. That's two years. Um and you'll see a chart later on, on page sixteen, which we'll talk about that in more detail. The last two years, uh fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty-one were the two lowest general fund tax levy increases um in the past six years. This budget uh also is sustaining educational quality. We have a sustained commitment to student and staff health and wellness. We're enhancing our focus on equity, which we'll see on, on page ten. And our stewardship of facilities is a continual point of, of growth here in the school district. We're also looking at enhancing our commitment to uh environmental sustainability through our budgeting of resources, which we'll look at a slide later on. We are um, we did change our pharmacy benefit manager, CBS Caremark, on April first. We are also utilizing leveraging of resources through capital leasing, which will uh provide benefits over the next five years of budgeting. So uh when I say lease, people think of first of operating lease, but this is essentially lease financing. Extremely low interest rates, usually uh under two percent for us. It would have been about a, a point and a half or a hundred fifty basis points. Um I know interest rates have dropped in this crisis, so there's a little uncertainty there. Essentially, the, the goal here is to uh leverage our purchasing. So, and then we could smooth out our purchasing over time so we can um improve our uh internet and uh technological infrastructure, which was uh so important in the very quick rollout of remote learning. We, I guess, you know, unlike maybe a majority of districts now, it seems like our, our one-to-one districts, we are not. I think it's one of the things we're starting to look at potentially going forward. But uh our amazing technology department was still able to uh leverage some of the things we've already had in place, such as our map program, but also we distributed Macs very quickly to uh other students who needed them. You know, one of the things I didn't think of is a family with, with three children in schools. You know, three or more becomes very challenging for, for all the kids to use, you know, if there's one PC or a couple in the, in the house. Of course, parents are working from home, extremely challenging time for everyone. This uh priority-based budget. So for me, this is a big one. Fine-tuning of our budgeting practices. Really important to get a better sense of, of how we spend our money. To accurately anticipate, to more accurately anticipate what we think our actual revenues are going to be. I spent an important exercise of uh mostly on the weekend, about twenty-five hours of calculating uh extraordinary aid to try to see what I think our baseline should be. And that way we can more effectively um prepare the budget as a whole. And again, continuing to, to constantly push back and ask, is this the best way to, is this the best vendor? Is this the best product? Uh is this the best way to, to spend our money? Efficient purchasing is extremely important. Utilizing the best co-ops available, um state contracts. There are extremely uh low prices on certain items, such as batteries that the state bids out. All these things like that are important, so we need to educate our staff to be able to efficiently purchase the things that we use every day. So this twenty twenty-one budget shows our commitment to equity. So one of the things that was very difficult last year was um our accelerated intervention service, uh service teacher reduction. So this budget will add a floating AIS, a- as we call it, position for the elementary schools. We are also looking to uh have a full-time family liaison as a repurposing of a vacant secretarial position at the middle school. This is really important um for the middle school. We have two new teaching positions, repurposed from elementary schools to address our, our, our sharp increase in enrollment at JW. We're predicting about seventy-eight more students at JW next year. Uh we have a new uh halftime special ed at JW and halftime ELL at PHS. So some of these things I'm talking about, um we're not going to be having a hiring freeze because of COVID nineteen, but I think we're going to be strategically hiring. So we may not be able to do everything that we're talking about all at once. We have two achievement instructional coaches, uh repurposed from two other positions in the district. They're going to focus on in-classroom early interventions, hands-on coaching of teachers to help incorporate improved equity-oriented teaching practices. This is a big goal um of our district. We're looking at using some funds from our food service enterprise fund to introduce a, a food literacy coordinator. And we're going to be rolling out on a uh trial basis, um an improvement of our cafeteria aid improvement pilot program, I guess we'd call it. That's also through our food service fund. So we'll pilot that in one school, then we'll see if we can continue to grow our food service revenue. So we'll be able to sustain that over time. You can only use food service funds for anything related to uh, for food and wellness in the school district. This budget contemplates a net addition of two FTEs overall. And as I said, um, you know, we're going to be very careful about adding these too quickly until we learn exactly what our budget situation will look like, hopefully uh ahead of that August twenty-fifth date. That was a, uh but we, the governor, you know, may not know uh much earlier than that. So this twenty twenty-one budget, um we were attempting to, uh we are attempting to enhance our facility stewardship and environmental sustainability. So one of the things, so we, we increased our, our maintenance budget lines a, a little more closely to affect, to uh reach what we've actually been spending over the last few years. We're also working on opportunities to uh partner with Sustainable Princeton to possibly improve our level of environmental sustainability. One of the things I'm really uh looking forward to is uh Dave and I are rolling out um implementation of LED lighting, uh building control systems and other possible uh energy efficiencies funded eighty percent through the BPU program, direct install uh for our four elementary schools. Our, a middle school and high school do not qualify because the uh daily usage is too high. But we're going to be looking at other uh Smart Start and other programs there as well. So basically, if you get eighty percent of these improvements paid uh through the direct install program, you then can finance the remaining twenty percent uh using short-term, uh similar to what I was talking about before, a capital lease. And you have a net positive uh budget impact as well as uh decreasing our um carbon footprint. We had contemplated a facility assistant. Uh this looks very unlikely in the near term. Any, any position like this would have to uh be budget neutral. And it doesn't look good at this point in time, but it's something we are definitely in the future going to be uh adding uh facilities assistant at some point. So to, that will help to organize our facilities and maintenance staff, custodial staff and better use our school dude work order, jo- uh job work order system so that all the users around can put in jobs and we can track them and see how well our people are, are performing those jobs. so that all the users around can put in jobs and we can track them and see how well our people are, are performing those jobs. So the budget calendar, we're down there in the highlighted yellow now. This is the public budget hearing and final budget adoption. One of the things I was tasked with here is, and so it's been a little bit of give and take, I think, learning experience with this finance department about starting the budget process early. I've been pretty clear, you know, and saying, so there's only so far ahead you can start it, but we really, we, we started in November and December. But there's, you know, being that the budget message this year was February 25th. It's usually that last Tuesday in February. And that's two days, 48 hours ahead of when the state gives out its state aid numbers. Although we don't heavily rely on state aid, there's only so far ahead you can really start the actual nuts and bolts budgeting. But we live it all, you know, I live it, business office lives it all year round here. So this is the final step in the budget process. So we want to talk about the school tax levy comparisons is, I think this is a very useful chart. Because our fiscal year doesn't coincide exactly with, it's the opposite of the municipal calendar. They're on a calendar year, their year ends December 31st, we end June 30th. So our school tax levy that we will adopt, I hope this evening, covers the second half of your calendar tax statement. So it's, it's, it's why you get that, there's a difference in the, that, that next quarter, the third quarter taxes will then go up by the tax levy. We have in 2019 and 20, our school tax levy was 83.999 million. In 2020 and 21, our school tax levy will be 86.249 million. So a big chunk of our tax levy increase, although we're doing a great job, like I was talking about before, being the lowest in, this year is the lowest in the last six years at 1.75% of our general fund. Due to our referendum, referendum, which we're working on right now, we issued debt in January of 2019. During the next fiscal year, we have to start paying principal on that debt. So as you can see, the 6.635 million in debt service this year compares to the 5.755 from last year. And the calendar 2020 tax levy, which will take half of the, the levy that we're adopting tonight, will go to the second half of calendar 2020. The second half will go to the first counter of the calendar 2021 tax levy. And so the calendar 2020 tax levy is 85.124 million. This next slide shows the piece of the pie and seven and two-thirds percent of the total tax levy goes to debt service and the remaining 92 and a third percent goes to the general fund. So we talked so much about the general fund because it's the, the operating budget. It's really what pays for most of what we do, our teachers, you know, our assistants, our administrators. We have a 2% general fund cap. There are potential waivers, we are not taking those waivers this year. So that, when I talked before about that 1.75% tax levy, the difference between that 1.75% and the 2.07%, which took into account enrollment waiver that we, we get when our weighted average enrollments increase over, it's a little bit of a complex calculation over the last six years, they take moving averages. And they waited also for our waiting of students with special ed, free and reduced, or English language learners, and then they allow us. So we were, would have been able to take a, just over $56,000 of an enrollment waiver this year, which we did not take, but that money, we will, we could, I should say, not will. We could use that in any of the next three successive budget years. It's called banked cap. So if, let's say the, this year, we do lose a lot of state aid and that continues over time, we can tax that if we have to going forward. The debt service levy covers our long-term capital projects. We get a chunk of that back. So if every dollar that we spent in our referendum was approved by the SDA at the state as meeting educational, certain things they won't, they won't pay for, but the vast majority of our referendum was paid for. They give us back about 34 cents on the dollar of that debt service. We get that back through debt service aid. In the past year, the referendums, they didn't get that debt service aid, but they use the regular operating district or rod grant subsidies, which is essentially the same percentage. As you know, or may not know, taxpayers have to approve the referendums. As of December 31st, 2019, we had 43.72, let's call it, million dollars of debt outstanding. We're going to look at that table next, or it's a couple of tables away. I could jump to that. Why would I do that? Like jumping around a little debt service levy. So we're talking about it pays for the long-term debt. So we have these three outstanding bonds out there, 43,718,000. Two of the bonds are coming mature in fiscal 22 and then fiscal 23. So some of our debt service tax levy will be dropping off in the next few years. We, in Princeton here, have a triple A Moody's rating, which is the highest rating available. And we did refinance debt. So I've been having a lot of questions. So we refinanced in December of 2018, this issue here, the $12 million was refinanced. So it can't be refinanced again. There are strict requirements on how often you can refinance debt, you have to show a net 3% savings to the state. But this is kind of what our debt picture looks like. And as you can see here, the debt service drops off in 22, 23. Fiscal 23, as I call it. So the taxpayer impact of the estimated calendar 2020 school tax levy of 85.124 million, which does go down when we, so we're adopting our budget hopefully tonight. And so we amended the tentative adopted budget that was March 17th. And so we decreased our tax levy. It was $253,000, $256,000. Our tax rate comparing fiscal 19, or calendar 2019 to 2020. So the the current 2020 tax base or the net assessed valuation or quote unquote ratables is just at $7.2 billion. It's not 100% falling yet. I got it updated as of yesterday. So it's a slight increase in our tax base. That increase has been declining, as a lot of people are aware. Real estate values are cyclical and they have been slowing down. Of course, the current financial crisis, we're not sure what exactly is going to happen, but it's not going to be positive in the near term for real estate. But the larger the base means that the tax levy, all else being equal, is shared across a larger base means that the effective tax rate goes down. So the 2.92% calendar year school tax for calendar year 2020 feels like a 2.6% school tax, effective school tax increase. So I was alluding to this slide before. It compares our general fund tax levy percentage over the past seven years to our enrollment growth. So one of the major focuses of our school district since I've been here and going backwards from there a couple of years is how do we deal with our increasing enrollments? What, how to predict what those enrollments are? And as we can see here, in the past six years, we've gone from 35, 36 to a projected 2021 enrollment of 3955. So in the last two years, you can see enrollments are going up, but we're spending more efficiently, at least on the general fund tax levy percentage. So this is an excellent indicator of the school district working towards being financially sustainable as we go forward. We're obviously going to have to deal with crowded schools. We have to effectively plan for increasing capacity to deal with, with enrollment growth. It's a big topic. I'm not going to dive too deep into it right here, but I think this is a very positive slide for the direction that the school district is going in. So this basically compares the last three adopted budgets. So one of the other changes we had from our, from the March 17th tentative adopted budget was the state made us, make us, I guess they did make us, we have to allocate 22,000 from our general fund to the grant, our special revenue fund. So we talked a lot about the general fund, we'll be talking about that more going forward. We don't focus too much on this special revenue fund, which is right here forecasted to be 3.246 million for fiscal 21. So that covers our, the biggest grant in there is our federal IDE grant, IDEA grant. I'm sorry, that covers, it's a federal grant that flows through the state for special education students. That's our biggest. We have a small amount, over a few hundred thousand dollars a year we get for title programs. And then a fairly large non-public state subsidized grant. So our private schools in our community get funded for textbooks, technology purchase, security purchases. And that flows through our school district. We have an employee here that part of their day goes towards helping those non-publics, which were required to help them spend their money. Non-public nursing is another service. So this slide is our total adopted budget. So all the operating fund, which is here, and the special revenue fund, and then our debt service fund, those three major funds. Total anticipated budget of $105.9 million, let's call it, 105,873,982. So up here you can see the general fund tax levy or the local tax levy in the general fund, 1.75% increase for fiscal 21. So this is a closer look at our revenues. As we can see here, out of the total general fund revenues, our tax levy makes up the vast majority of our, of our district's funds. We don't get a lot of state aid. As you can see here, we're not for the first time here in the past six, out of the six years, we are not, we don't get a healthcare adjustment or, and we are not taking the enrollment adjustments. As I discussed, it was a small, just over 56,000 and that will go into banked cap for potential use if we need it later. Our tuition's biggest line in here is our send-receive agreement. We receive our community members from Cranberry, that's the bulk of this. State aid, categorical state aid. So we get state aid for, the biggest piece of that is special education students. It's general fund money that goes into the general fund. But it is for, based on our special education student enrollment from the previous year. Extraordinary aid. So one of the things here, as you can see, so although we're estimating you on a typical basis, like I said, I calculated that approximately, we're going to get, hopefully, now fiscal 2020 amounts possibly could be on, in play, so to speak, with the state. We don't know what kind of cuts they're going to make for fiscal 20. We don't receive extraordinary aid until the summer. Typically, they open up the grant application, is typically opened up around this time of year and is due right after or right before Memorial Day. But, so we're, we're forced to budget fund balance down here. I've highlighted this 2.5 million dollar budgeted fund balance. So as you can see, my other years here, so one of the, one of the most important things in, in budgeting is to focus on our actual expenses. So the state has very tight rules on what we are supposed to carry into fund balance. Basically, once you get over this 2% number, then they force you to budget each year your fund balance. We need more than 2% of our general fund. So it's two, it's based on your general operating fund, your allowable fund balance. So we're forced to budget $2.5 million in budgeted fund balance. We don't want to spend that every year. We want to, basically, my goal as a school district financial manager is to break even. We're here to educate students not to hoard money. We need to have adequate reserves, so there's, there's clearly a very important balance there. But one of the things, so we anticipate, or I would hope that we would get around one and three million, 1.75 million dollars in extraordinary aid, but we budget 750. So it makes it a little easier to manage the budget. Cause it's so, all else being equal, if we spent everything that we budgeted, we would spend this fund balance at the end of the year. And like I said, that would be unsustainable. It's very important to balance our recurring expenses can only be funded with recurring revenue. So that means like salaries are recurring each year. We hire a teacher and we hope that teacher stays with us and prospers and teaches our students well for 30, 35 years. But that's the clearest example of recurring expenses. So we can only fund, so if we spend our budgeted fund balance every year, we'll pretty soon be out of money. And that's not good. You can also see this year, so it's been, so we're anticipating, we're not obligated to spend this capital reserve withdrawal. This is potentially to help with a, with the referendum costs at the final project. Excuse me, which should hopefully be bid this spring for the JP Schools HVAC equipment. Some of our projects are running slightly over the original referendum estimates. There's been a lot of, some inflationary pressure and other things. So this is a way to ensure and exactly what the purpose of capital reserve is for. For capital, it can only be spent on capital projects. In fact, there is no other statutory, once you assess, so I've been talking about fund balance, right? So we have as of the last audited year right now is June 30th, 19, 2019. We have a little over $6 million in operating fund balance and we have a little over $2.3 million in capital reserve. So that capital reserve can never come out of there. There is no statutory allowable reason except for spending on capital projects. So potentially, we may use some of this money to help offset, I should say, to help pay for referendum projects this year. So the adopted general fund revenue analysis, we're talking about budgeted fund balance quite a bit. I talked about how it's required to be anticipated, but we don't intend on spending it. It comes into play for, perfect example is what we're going to go through. A little uncertainty here for the next 12 months or so. So it could come into play in the next year if we have to dip into that to make it through the year. Like I've, I've said before, we are proposing a budget that increases our general fund tax levy by 1.75%. So we did have as of February 25th, so we did have a state aid increase of 5.37%. It was about 270 something thousand dollars. However, this was offset by increasing Uh, however, this was offset by uh increasing charter school uh budgeted expenditures. And also, we're gonna be getting um. What we think will be revised downward state aid numbers around August twenty-fifth. So there's definitely some uncertainty in this budget. Um, but we have the flexibility and the ability to plan for for um unknown things uh. Mainly the uh fund balance will help us get through there and then we're gonna reduce expenses. Um, as we have to, um, we'll see what that, what happens. Um, and we're we're um focusing and positive as always. I already talked about the debt service. Um, levy went over uh these two slides here. So the other side of the equation, right? So we have revenues, then we have appropriations. So this shows also the last six uh budget years. Um, and as I was talking about before, I focus as much as we can on actual expenditures. And then estimated actual, cause we're not quite through fiscal twenty-twenty. You know, ahead of these uh COVID nineteen and remote schooling. Effects, we were forecasted to be uh slightly negative on, in other words, have slightly less revenues than expenditures for fiscal twenty-twenty. Um, that looks to have changed, um, but will ultimately depend on. If we end up getting our uh full amount of extraordinary aid is kind of that last piece of the fiscal year that we don't find out about till um. Usually the typically the second week in July. So for our adopted fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, clearly, as you can see at the top, salaries and benefits make up the lion's share of of our expenditures. Um, based on the last full year, the actual expenditures uh in two thousand and nineteen was uh just about seventy-seven percent of our. Actual expenditures went to uh salaries and benefits. Our largest uh benefit line is health insurance, uh health, including uh medical and RX. Um, there's workers' compensation. Um, we also pay. Uh pension on our non-certificated staff uh to the P E R S, the uh. One of the two, uh, well, actually, there's more than two. Police and fire is also a large pension system, which doesn't affect us. It affences uh affects our. Municipal brother uh across the street. So uh P E R S, we have to pay the um pension on those employees. So our teachers' pension, so for all teachers and certificated administrators, the state um pays those. Uh, that pension amount for all districts in the state of New Jersey. Um, and if you include that and that's social security uh is also in that benefit line. They also pay for the social security payments for all. Certificated teachers and it's certified administrators in the state of New Jersey. Um, and in our annual financial report, our CAFR. Um, there's line items there and if you add those up, that amount uh. For um, the last fiscal year, two thousand and nineteen, that was audited was uh twelve million dollars. So the state makes approximately twelve million dollars um a year and that's going up because benefit costs are increasing. Of on behalf pension as social security payments uh for our district and it's calculated for every district across the state. It's one of the. Single biggest uh line items in the state budget. Uh, the other expenses down here below, um charter school, um. Tuitions, uh special education out of district, we've had. So they have been pretty flat here. If you look back here uh to fiscal two thousand sixteen um to just under three million dollars. They're they're a little cyclical and unpredictable. Um, special ed cases uh where um. They go through, it's a legal uh right of our parents and um uh some parents, uh some predictable parents that move into town with special needs children. So there's a lot of flexibility here. Um, cases often, if they have a disagreement with how we propose to educate those students. You can take um a couple of years to have the proper proper um. Either hopefully, typically, it's very amicable um. With the parents, but so we've had uh this year, it did jump back up. So it was the first year since two thousand sixteen. Um, but it's gonna be higher. So dipped down and um we're planned uh for slightly higher uh next year. So we've had, I think, um. What's estimated to be almost thirty percent. Growth here in uh two years. So that that's a pressure on the budget, but um. You know, we can uh, like I said, eh, there's somewhat of a unpredictable nature to that. And in the very short term, there um is not a lot we can do. We can manage uh things better for the long term. Or manage things well for the long term. Our energy costs, um, which we're hopefully going to uh improve on with uh rollout of LED lighting. School supplies, this has been one of the areas where we're really looking to um. To spend the money efficiently and decrease. So we're forecasting to spend less than uh significantly less, over a hundred thousand dollars less than we actually spent in two thousand and nineteen. Um, this number of almost two million is gonna be down. People are spending less on supplies and and remote learning. So far, um, actually, the equipment line here, this is part of the operating budget where we were purchasing equipment, more than half this amount is an SDA charge. Uh, I think ours is two hundred thirty-nine thousand, so the the. The majority of this is going to a state assessed uh to pay for the school development authority at the state level. Administrative expenses, we're holding the line on. Um, nurse guidance, child study team. So I've tried to develop uh a very. Historical uh budget model. Um, one of the things I was tasked with here and uh, you know. Taking that historical analysis and then making prospective budget modeling. So I've been uh rolling that out with the finance committee. We've really been working on um on this and I'm I'm very uh. Very happy so far. I'm working hard as always. Transportation lines. Slight budget increase here. Extracurricular, we're holding the line on and then so uh down here we have. Budgeted fund balance, which we don't anticipate on spending, and then the potential. One point five million dollars of um capital reserve uh. So if we don't spend that, it goes back into the capital reserve at the end of the year. So that brings us to uh general fund uh appropriations of ninety-five. Excuse me, point four million dollars. So I've been talking a lot about budgeted fund balance. Capital reserve budget, um. Talked about that extensively already. Talked about special education costs. So exactly, so I analyzed over the last six years, uh compound annual growth rate. You hear me talk about that a lot. Um, that's basically uh over the six years, one point four four percent, which is not a lot. Um, and I was alluding to the twenty-nine percent increase over the last two years. So it's been a little bit of a budget pressure, definitely um the current year. And um forecasted for the twenty-twenty-one budget. Charter school tuitions have been pressuring uh the budget. They're forecasted to have increased five point six percent over the last six years. Um. In the current year, the the forecast is for a three point eight percent increase, so it's moderating. Uh, benefit increases um have leveled off hopefully in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we have a new pharmacy benefit manager and our medical rates uh had a one point nine percent. Renewal, which is excellent. Uh, so we have, we've been having, uh, we have a pretty steady uh claims rate. So we're in, we are self-insured on the prescription side, but we are fully insured on the medical side. But our renewal rates are only as good as, you know, what have you done for me lately for the health insurance companies? So we have a pretty, excuse me, stable group. We did have a higher increase last year. Um, part of uh the benefit, I believe, is that the ACA tax is rolling off uh for fiscal twenty-one. So it helps the uh uninsured medical plans, they have to pay, I think it was close to three percent. So that's. Savings uh passed through to us, so we're very happy with this. Um, it is better than forecasted. But we have been um seeing in the last five months, so since the beginning part of budget planning in November. We've seen more people come on our uh medical insurance rolls. Uh, once again. Uh, unpredictable, that's a an expense that, you know. We don't um. It is hard to predict who's coming on and off our health insurance roles. It always depends on. Particular families, uh the makeup of our of our uh employees, et cetera, et cetera. So um. We were initially uh recently looking at potentially uh a four percent. Increase on medical rates. Our new health insurance broker, Doyle Alliance Group. Was um. Forecasting four percent. Unfortunately, that difference there has mainly been eating eaten up by um. By more people on our medical insurance rolls. So we're really looking at controlling our expenses on supplies um across the district. Maintenance costs, we are trying to increase our line items, but not just throw money at a problem. We're looking at proactively. Um, doing uh maintenance to uh. If you let something go, so if you don't do proper preventive maintenance on. Let's say, well, I guess a good example is all the new HVAC equipment we we installed uh last year at Riverside and then we'll be installing. At three more schools this summer and then I talked before about next summer at JP. If we don't effectively uh. Maintain them, then they don't last as long. So it's important to spend money, but we wanna spend it wisely and efficiently. On maintenance. So looking forward to future budgets. So each year seems to get harder and harder, um, because so much of our budget, like I said, uh more than three quarters is. Uh, employee wages and benefits. So um, you know, benefit costs uh somewhere around. Medical, at least I should say, the health insurance side, um. Medical and RX have averaged somewhere around seven percent over the last ten years. So it's important to uh effectively control those costs. You can see here highlighted, we're gonna have to adapt and re-engineer our finances uh with any uh COVID nineteen impacts, whether that's. How we roll out our education over the next twelve months or how the state um. Is eh cuts our, potentially cuts our state aid. And then I should mention on the positive side. Um, some of the federal aid programs that may roll through um to our school district. Um, we're gonna be working uh continuously to advocate at state level for our school district. Uh, we have a special education review by the uh PCG group that is underway. Um, I've been interviewed. Uh, superintendent has been interviewed, I think, a number of people so far. Uh, I guess that's been a little slower to start off, of course, with this environment we're in, but it was a a very engaging uh robust conversation I had with the group. Three consultants from PCG, so they're gonna be looking in depth at our special education. How we deliver our services and how we um, how efficient are we financially is a piece of that. Um, piece of that internal review. Technology plan development and implementation of budget leveraging through capital leasing I discussed earlier, that's gonna help. Uh, potentially ease some of this budget pressure over the next few years. Um, we're constantly looking at ways to share services. Um. The transportation director here, uh Donna Braden, is great at um proactively um doing busing jointures, so uh. If we're sending one kid to a school, we try to find another town right near us, maybe Lawrenceville. Maybe Hopewell, um, maybe Montgomery, who is sending, also sending a student and she saves money that way by busing that student and sharing the costs. Increased energy efficiency, we talked about that already quite a bit. Um, we're looking at implementing, implementing. I'm just making up words here. Um, implementing academic return on investment. So it's a uh a new way to analyze. Over time, uh quantitatively, how the money that we spend, so you can't possibly. Spend, you know, we have very tight budgets, we can't just throw money at different things, but it's a way to quantitatively. Analyze what's our return on academic investment. Um, we're looking at uh facility use fees as well as fundraising opportunities for programs. Um, wherever applicable. So um, I'm gonna open this up to questions first uh about this budget from the board. I think everyone is probably muted while I was talking, but feel free.
Matt, could I just begin with a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
Okay, first of all, thank you um for all your hard work and the need to do even more hard work. Um, in the recent weeks. Um, I'm also very grateful to Steve and, you know, uh. You know, leaders throughout the district who started last fall to work on a budget. That achieved exactly what we hoped it would, which is um allocating resources to further, you know, our our mission and goals. While um uh requiring no reductions in in force. Um, in the very challenging, you know, two percent levy constrained environment that we work in. And when we talked about this at our budget meeting in uh February, um, everybody was in high spirits. And um, the model that we've been using uh in recent days is the. Or the visual is that of a snapshot. And so every year, the budget is a snapshot. Um, that we take that reflects our best thinking at a certain point in time. And this snapshot was taken before the COVID crisis hit. Um, so it's important for everybody to know that um the budget that we are. Um, recommending for approval today is unlikely to be the final budget. Um, the state gave itself um additional time to revise their budget. Um, which likely will result in, or quite possibly could result in reductions in state aid. Um, and we're also gonna need to digest um some of the the challenges that Steve talked about that may lead to increased costs. As we enter the next school year. So um, over the summer, uh and we're gonna start before that. We are gonna need to look uh very, very hard at this budget. And try to prepare um for what could be significant reductions in state aid. And we get a total of about six million dollars in state aid, as Matt said. In addition to the twelve point one million dollars of uh pension support provided by the state. So I I just really hope that everybody understands that this is snapshot one, taken before the crisis began. The one thing that we did, that the the finance committee has recommended. Is despite the very tight budget situation, um, we felt it was. It would, it wouldn't be right to move forward without at least reducing it somewhat. And um, I think that everybody would wish in a perfect world, we could reduce it more. Um, but reducing it by two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars um just seemed to be. Um, the 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 maximum that we could think about at this time. Um, that wouldn't result in a significant, potentially a significant erosion in the educational quality. And other members of the committee may have a more to say. So um. What we have is here is personally, I think it's a great budget. I think it's the best budget we've ever had. I think it's the best process we've had. It's been very transparent and the finance committee has been engaged um all throughout. But it's not gonna be the real world um when we we get to July and August. So um, with that in mind, I I offer my gratitude and um. Uh, but also not just for the work that's been done, but for the very, very hard work that lays ahead of us. Uh, during a time when we'll likely come up with an amended budget that will need to be resubmitted.
So uh, Matt, thank you. I wanna echo Brian's comments. I think your your. Your effort uh and the detail that goes into your your budgets and presentation is. Is really wonderful and uh and and uh. And it lays out a strategy going forward for, you know, how we can control costs and and control spending. And um, you know, I'm, we we're all concerned, of course, about the impact economically it has on. All the citizens of the world, of the United States and the world. And of course, you know, the people on unemployment, twenty-six million. Eight hundred fifty-eight thousand have applied for unemployment claims in New Jersey alone. So it's. When you see the devastation economically, uh, it's just heartbreaking. So I have a couple of questions. Number one is. What is the final deadline? Number one is, what is the final deadline for us to approve a budget? Do we have to do it tonight? Can we do it, uh? Could we do it next Tuesday, uh, in comply with the law?
Uh, we have until, we talked about it last night. It is May 7th is the statute deadline.
So we have until May 7th. So if we wanted to take another week or nine days to, you know, put as much thought into poss, as possible into, you know, identifying savings, we would have a week to do so. Is that correct?
Nine days.
Nine days. Okay.
We have. Yes.
And the, and the second question is, if we were to air and let's say, not raise the tax levy to the maximum allowed by law and the state, uh, aid that we anticipated in the budget didn't come in, that, that, uh, tax levy will be banged for three years. So we would, we would have three years to spend that with adjustment. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And if we, um, found out again this year after approving a budget that the state aid came less and we really needed more, uh, for our students, we would be able to dip into that fund balance and then replenish it a year later through that bank cap. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Ju- just, um, one question, follow up and one note. Um, in terms of replenish, of course, it would depend how much we reduced it by, but there would be some opportunity to recapture some of that. If, uh, the, that amount wasn't needed for other cost increases that Steve described earlier. Uh, Matt, in terms of, um, the thought about May 7th, if we were to defer, we still need to vote in public and notice that, correct?
Yes, we had talked about that last night. We would have to re-advertise for a budget hearing, which is a four day notice. So we basically have to advertise tomorrow or Thursday. Um, and we don't have a meeting, we have our, we have a meeting next Tuesday. So we would have to, uh, be hard pressed to advertise by Friday, um, for that Tuesday meeting.
And don't you need to go back to the county as well?
Well, we will be, uh, if we do that, um, we can make changes, uh, like we amended, uh, this budget is, uh, the reduction, the 253,000 dollars. We will make that change. I've notified the county, but we will open up the budget tomorrow if the budget is adopted as, uh, put forward tonight. I'm not sure, even one of the things I want to talk about in relation to that, uh, those, uh, three questions, uh, even in a perfect world, um, budgets are uncertain. I think I've talked about that quite a bit since I've been here. Um, so we, we will always, uh, adapt to, uh, to this, uh, uncertainty. Now clearly the, uh, level uncertainty is much higher, um, this year.
Matt, I, I just want to say, I, I'm so grateful to the work that you've done since you joined us last August. I mean, you have had to get your arms around a hundred million dollar budget in just a few months. And you have drilled down and given us transparency and specificity and answered all of our questions. And we've spent so much time with you and we just are grateful for the work you've done to help us better understand what's going on under the hood of the schools. I had a question, and one of the things I really appreciate also is the historical, um, looking back and then projecting forward. Cause I think many of us, when we joined the board, said, we really want to do some more, more, more of a long-term planning. We don't want to just get dropped on one year to year to year, but we want to look where we're going. We want to understand the longer view. So I appreciate that perspective. One of the things, could you clarify a little bit more, as you said, we may have some savings this year from the COVID crisis. Um, you know, I know we don't know exactly what that is yet, but if you could give some sort of order of magnitude of what that is, are we talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands? And then looking forward, we, we also have this kind of open-ended unknown about the costs of coming back. Um, and I guess, again, we don't even know, uh, what an organ, order of magnitude that would be. But I do think I've, I've experienced some people saying to me, well, there must be a lot of savings this year without school being in person. Could you speak to that?
Well, I think as, uh, well, I know the board is aware and, uh, I think most of the public is aware that, you know, uh, we've been paying, uh, most of our employees and most of our employees have been working extremely hard, especially our teachers, big shout out. Um, I think it's, I know, uh, for us here in a central administration is an extremely stressful time, but for the teachers, I think it was just tremendous. You know, so, so most of our staff is still being paid. There are certain savings there. So, and I do think the wild card there potentially is, uh, that extraordinary aid number will, will kind of, uh, depend on how much we're able to add to fund balance for this year. If extraordinary aid came in close to what we would have expected, uh, this year, because that money is appropriated this year um, by the state, um, we should be adding, um, over a million dollars to the fund balance this year. Um, there's a lot of caveats, you know, to that. I think most of the, depending on when we, when, and if we start school back, um, the increases in spending will likely go against, uh, next year's budget. We have started to spend a little bit on some of those items, um, looking to, uh, get some more of those ionizers that we were, our facilities team, and I'm not going to take the credit there was, I think they got.
Matt, can you stop sharing your screen so people can see you?
Yeah, let me, uh, I'll get out of the budget presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, I lost you.
I'm in, uh, like the gallery view, everybody, or the speaker view?
Gallery, gallery, I got. Can you guys see anything?
Everything.
Yes.
I'm totally lost, everybody.
Zoom again, click on the app again.
Did you go?
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
Everybody can see you now, Matt.
Good.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Betsy.
Well, I could, um, I just want to thank, uh, you, Matt, for an excellent presentation and thank you to all my, uh, finance, uh, colleagues who did a great job, uh, with this. And so I want to start out with that I, I voted to approve the budget on March 17th in the parking lot. And, uh, I think none of us understood, um, at the time, the ramifications this pandemic would have. And so I think we have two issues here. On one hand, we have a real concern that state aid is going to be cut. Um, I'm hopeful it won't be, but that's a real concern. On the other hand, we have, um, residents, taxpayers in our community who have been affected, um, by job losses and other things. So I feel we have two things that are, um, you know, not, not, um, mutually exclusive. So my first question is, so I know, I understand that we want to budget, we want to have some flexibility. But if state aid is reduced, um, like last year, we got an additional 1.7 million extraordinary aid that went into the reserve balance. Is there any reason that for one year, we couldn't use our reserve balance to offset, um, any reduction in state aid?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I've talked about this, uh, fairly often before. I mean, that is the, one of the primary mechanisms that we're able to deal with, um, even typical uncertainties that affect us and, and, uh, will be potentially one of the ways that, um, that we get through this. Uh, you know, I think the important part is, is going to try to, uh, assess, which is difficult, you know, whether, uh, any cuts that we get, uh, would be recurring in the future or hopefully be, uh, one year old.
Okay. And then my next question, and I have a lot, because we haven't, I didn't have a chance to provide any input. Is it possible to refinance the 2018 referendum, debt from the 2018 refer? No?
No.
Okay.
Wait, wait, what? Because Daphna, I had him call Phoenix, maybe you could tell us all a little more.
Yeah. So I reached out to, um, our financial advisor, who I guess have retired at the end of this year. So she's been, uh, and then I, uh, did CC bond counsel, which I was fairly certain, um, since we just did refinance. Um, and then the new debt is not, um, is not old enough to, to, to refinance yet. Potentially, they were talking about down the road, potentially some kind of, uh, leeway from this financial crisis to accelerate the process of the refunding. But that would necessitate there being an active municipal bond market, um, which clearly the bond markets have been, um, chaotic. But no, we cannot refinance that debt at this time.
Okay. Um, and so I want to say that the $250,000, uh, reduction from our March 17th meeting is great. And I'm, again, I'm just concerned that, uh, we always talk about our reserve fund as like a rainy day fund, and I feel like the rain is here. And I feel we need to do more, um, for our taxpayers, um, you know, at this time. So, so my question is, um, with regard to school supplies, energy, extracurricular, um, activities and athletic events, is there a way we can take, you know, I, I think we all know at least the first half of the year, a lot of that, like school trips aren't going to happen. So we're funding the money as if we're going to have a normal year, when I think we can all, I, I mean, we know, I would think based on what the scientific experts are saying, that we won't have a normal fall. Um, and so I'm just wondering, um, if, if that's a possibility. The next thing, uh, possible, okay. So the ID, the IDEA grant, um, is down. And how do you know, um, that grant will be reduced?
The IDEA grant is down.
Yes, it's on, on the budget presentation, you showed it going down and, and I just wonder why.
I, I'm not aware of any, uh, downticks. So we, we have to budget 85%. The statement is to budget 85% of IDEA each year.
Okay.
We're basically, we're holding that, um, static.
Okay. And did we get money from the CARES Act?
Not yet.
Not yet, but are we anticipating? I thought it was like a.
Potentially, um, I, you know, we have prominently estimate of $232,000.
Okay, okay. And then, and is that in the budget anywhere?
No, because we haven't, we haven't been, uh, promised the money yet.
When do you, when do we think we'll know?
Uh, probably in the coming month or so.
Okay. Because that's another area, if we're pretty confident that we're going to get it, we can find another 232,000.
Well, it's a one-time revenue, so the really important part is that the vast majority of our expenditures are recurring by nature. So, you know, there's a fine balance between, um, shorting too much on the revenue side, since the vast majority of our expenses are recurring.
Okay. Um, and then, um, with regard to the special ed out of district placements, we discussed it in, um, student achievement. And Mickey, um, seemed to indicate, and please, special education, um, and student achievement colleagues chime in, that the out of district placements were going to remain relatively flat.
Uh, we've, uh, yeah, relatively flat. So we have, there's a couple of things going on there. So we always have rebills, they call them rebills. So the, uh, private school tuitions, they get audited at the, in the next year. So we're constantly paying increases. Typically, I think this year was about $56,000. So we forecasted a cushion in total, including the rebills of, uh, just under $200,000. So we have move-ins, uh, like I was talking about all the time. One potential move-in could take up three quarter, uh, potentially three quarters of that.
Okay. Um, it just, that seems a little high to me. And then just finally, you mentioned, you mentioned the special ed audit, which is underway. And I just wanted the special ed people watching, that the primary goal, as I understand it, is to ensure that we're providing special education related services as efficiently and effectively as possible. Now, in that, in that process, we might find some budget savings, but that is not the goal. I just want people to think that's what's driving, um, the review.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, hi, it's Debbie. Thank you again for a really detailed budget and lots and lots of time spent on it. Um, last year I voted no on the budget. And at the end of my speech, I was like, if we didn't start doing something the next day, we'd end up in the same spot. And I'm happy to say that we're not in the same spot because I was very aggravated last year. So I'm, I'm pleased that, you know, one of the big things was to start early, looking at our budget and talk about real detail. And I'm really happy that we have started that. We still have a lot of work to do, but it's, but, uh, you know, I know it's a huge wheel and it takes a while. So I'm happy about that because, you know, I want us to review more. Obviously we've talked about some of these technology, supplies, parking, travel, just turning the lights off, trip purchasing. So I'm glad that we're doing some of this. I don't want us to lose any momentum on this because we need to stay with this. And I was really glad that one of my ideas, that we're able to pilot a, um, implement a pilot of subs, of looking at substitutes at PHS. And so I'm hoping we can do more of these kind of ideas and, and try them. And I'm, you know, I know we had a place where the community and staff could send in any cost-saving ideas. And I hope people will still be doing that because, um, you know, we, we need to do this anyway, regardless of the, you know, pandemic. And the pandemic's obviously made things a lot more edgy. But I am happy that I don't have to give the speech I gave last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just add one, uh, note to one of Daphna's excellent points. Um, uh, which is, you know, could we go lower? The storm is here. Um, it is here. Um, and one of the big questions is how long it's going to last? So if we were to drop down to say 1%, we would be giving up about $800,000 of revenue. And, um, while there are some opportunities to go into fund balance next year, um, if we saw a reduction in state aid of any magnitude, you know, say $2 million or even $3 million, half of the six that we get. Um, if we already went into, you know, fund balance for $500,000 or $600,000, we would have less room. And if this is a, a challenge that persists beyond next year, we also need to think about that. So it's this, it's the right question. And, and we agonized for an hour and 45 minutes on this about trying to figure out what the, the right balance is in, in saying we, we, we all need to share some of this pain and the taxpayers are suffering. And this is where the committee came out, you know, in terms of the balance of, of trying to do something, not as much as, as, as many of us want to do, but the maximum we thought we could do responsibly and still be in a position to, i- if not eliminate, at least reduce the, the, the chances that there would be significant reductions in force as a result. And also to keep faith with the initiatives that we have done. Um, you know, the commitment to equity i- is an important one. And if we looked at, you know, the, the positions most recently added is the ones that might be the most likely to be reduced. We'd be looking at some that are related to equity and, and, and there isn't a member of the finance committee who, who wants to reduce our commitment to that, you know, number one goal that we have as a district. So you're, you're, it's exactly the right question. And without the crystal ball, it, it's just every, all five people and they, they were, nobody was very comfortable.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate that. I guess my point was, if you look on the, on the table that Matt provided, school supplies, um, energy, we know energy. Do we have any idea what energy's gone down just in the month and a half we've been out? I mean, these are things that are low hanging fruit. And so I'm not calling for any, um, reduction in staff, period, end of story. But I think there's other ways, you know, we can sharpen the pencil a little bit. And I'm concerned, I hear you, what you're saying about equity, but there's also the other end of it that, you know, people can't, might not be able to afford to pay their taxes. And, you know, what does that do? And what's our responsibility? I mean, the town came in with, I think, a neutral budget, right?
The town, yes. I, um, checked in with the mayor and Scott Sillers, the, the chair of the citizens finance advisory committee to make sure I understood what they did. And they are going to have, um, no tax increase. They're not reducing services. Um, they've done a couple of very smart financial things. They have a, a much larger surplus, um, relative to their size than we do. And it's, um, one of the differences between municipal finance and, and school finance. Um, but yes, they're going to be at zero, um, which is, which is great. And they, um, found a, a path to get there that didn't result in any reductions in service.
Well, we're not offering any reduction in service either. I mean, if we stop buying school supplies, um, except for those kids that need it, that can't afford, their families can't afford them. I mean, that's not really something that I don't think any of us would lose sleep over. And I understand that this is probably a two, like economists are saying, this is going to be a two-year, um, runway for, for the issues that we'll be having economically. And I'm just saying to, to levy taxes that even if we amend the budget, we cannot go back and change the tax levy to save the money for the future. to save the money for the future, I just don't know if that's the best we can do.
I'll jump in, I'd love to jump in, because the finance conversation was just this, as Brian's saying. It was, it was very much a compromise, because I, while we're talking, you know, this, this compromise, while we wish it could be more, we also don't know, Daphna, how much kids are going to need next year and what we have to provide for them. And that has to be the most important work of our board. So in my mind, when we think about this as a snapshot, I think in August, we're going to take a second snapshot. And maybe we'll know better than, we can take out some, some from supplies and some from travel and more than we've done. But I think we're moving it to different categories. We may need more of our staff to work with these students, to help them to recover from what has been a really difficult time for a lot of our students. So I just want to underscore the thanks from Matt. And I really appreciate the collaboration of my colleagues. I think this, this board has done, there's been a lot of great conversation about this. But the bottom line is, it's not over. We don't know what we'll get from the state, and we don't know what our students will need. So as, the 1.75 was very much a compromise among the finance committee for all of these reasons.
Well, I want to say, you know, I appreciate that. And I guess, since we have until May 7th, I would like to see more, I would like to see where we're budgeting the money, allocating the money. I mean, to prove it now, you know, I don't know what the, my view into that process will be. And I'd like to see, so if the money's going to go towards instruction, let's put it in the instruction category. I fully support that. I'm just saying, I would like to see reductions in areas that we can all, everyone could feel a little pain in, such as school supplies. And also, like, for example, the facility assistant, that's going to be, that said that it's going to be budget-neutral, it's going to be, you know, where is that in the priority list? Is that ahead of an AIS teacher? Where does that fit in? But I would just like more clarity. If, if, you know, we need more aids next year, does the facility assistant come ahead of that? So I just want to have a better understanding of where the money's going. That's all I'm saying.
More, I'm wondering what, we may not have any more information before May 7th, other than you're, you're looking for more insight.
Well, I'm looking for the money to be allocated where we think we need to spend it. That's all I'm saying.
And I, and I would, I would just say, I think this, this snapshot one might be our first best guess. If we all think collectively, we can get a second, better guess by May 7th, then that's what we should do. But I'm not sure what information we'll have that we don't have now.
I'm just saying that Matt said, well, we could cut school supplies, energy. We know extracurriculars will be, like, lower next year.
We could have more energy. We could have to run double shifts of school. And we don't know that. We could have more bus routes, because we have to run double shifts of school. Like, I think there's so many things in the air that we don't know how things might look. And, I mean, unfortunately, we have to approve this budget, knowing so, so few of the variables that are probably the biggest variables this district has faced in, you know, 15 years.
Absolutely.
And that's all the reason not, not to rush, though. And I would feel more comfortable if we took all the time, because I think this budget is really momentous in terms of budgets, given the pain and suffering of the country, the state, and the community.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely could see that.
You know, I would like us as a board to take every possible hour, you know, and this budget's complicated. It's over $100 million. And, you know, we've all been working tirelessly on multiple committees, participating in presentations on food delivery, food distribution, and finance, and facilities, and student achievement. And I know everybody is exhausted. And I think the board has gone to extraordinary efforts to do the right thing by the students and the community and the staff. And I agree with Debbie that this budget analysis is more thorough and detailed and robust than anything I've seen before. And I commend Matt and everybody who's been involved in that. But, you know, we have nine days. And if we can come up with a little more, you know, or just validate what we think we have, then, you know, I think that we should do that.
So could I just ask, you know, in terms of specifics, I completely hear and respect the notion that we should take every moment of time we have, although I'm reluctant to take more of Matt's time, since he's not been doing some of the other parts of his job that need, need doing. And he's been in, where, he's been sitting right there for 16 hours today, so far. Thank you, Matt. I hope you get up and walk around in the dark building. But I think it's going to be hard to kind of assess the, you know, if you want to look at everything, you look at what's the probability of a drop-off in aid. So we'd have to make some assessment there. We'd have to try to calculate what the savings would be for the balance of this year. We'd also have to get Steve and maybe student achievement to estimate what the cost could be for the students who are not keeping up during this period of remote learning. Some are, but some students are clearly not keeping up. And they're, they're definitely some special education students who are going to need significantly more time and attention when we return to school, since for many of our students, the remote learning does not replace the in-classroom experience and working with their teachers' needs. So I just don't know, it's, I mean, if we're at 1.5% or 1.25%, I think it's still going to be a bit of a throwing a dart and wondering, do we use more reserves this year, or do we keep them as reserves for what could be a prolonged crisis? And I don't think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit. You know, if, if we transition to LEDs, which could take a year easily, we'll begin saving energy. At the same time, the air conditioners are coming on, it'll be consuming a bit more energy. Matt did take, we did save $700,000 in this budget, approximately $500,000 through self-insuring, through our own prescription benefit program. And Matt spent a lot of great time on that. And another $200,000 has come out of supplies and purchasing and some other areas. And now we're taking another $253,000 out. So that's, that's amazing progress.
No, but, I mean, your point's a good one, of course, Brian, in that this is a very challenging environment. My point is that if we had to dip in, you know, whenever we went below in terms of our budgeted, our cap, our legal cap, goes into, is, is, is banked, it's available for us. So if we had to go into reserve, we would only be going into reserve for one year, because we would then have that banked cap to use.
And just, let me just jump in and say the pain next year. Next year might not be better. And my concern is if we feel we need the full 2% next year, and we're going to go back and get the banked amount, then we're looking at a bigger increase, you know, for our taxpayers. And that's not ideal either.
Beth, you're muted.
I've been trying to interrupt. I want to just say, for good procedure, can we just make sure everyone's had a chance to speak before we have multiple? There's numbers who haven't been able to talk yet. So.
Oh, I just want to, I mean, echo the thanks, for sure. It's unbelievable, the work that's gone into this. And I, so, as, I'm not a finance person, I so appreciate Matt and all of you, and the clarity of the explanation. This may be just a side note, but I want to just underline it in case it turns out to be useful to us in the long run. But Matt, you mentioned this idea of academic return on investment, which I only barely have a sense of. But I know it's, I know it's an innovation when it comes to the way school finance is looked at. It's not very commonly used. But I, I think it's maybe something that's going to be really useful to us going forward. And particularly because of our, our strong emphasis on equity. And so figuring out what are the right dollars to be spending and where? And what, what is the academic impact in terms of compensation for time lost in the classroom? I think those are going to be really important questions. So I hope that as we continue to figure out these issues in the big picture, I hope that academic return on investment and equity somehow come together in the conversations that we're having.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, and I don't have hard evidence yet, I don't think any of us do, but this remote learning is affecting some of our students disproportionately, you know.
And, and I want to add that, as I say all the time, a budget is your statement of values. It speaks to what you think is important and the, and the things that need to happen. And, and under normal circumstances, it's very challenging. We just, we're guessing. Brian said we're throwing a dart, you know, at a wall. That's what we're doing. And, and so, what, number one, I endorse taking as much time as we can to think this over and to fine-tune. I have no opposition. If we have nine days, we should take eight and a half days to make sure that we are as comfortable as we can be in an environment of uncertainty. But I think the overall, what, the one thing we're going to have to get used to is that we're not going to be sure. So if we feel confident that we're focusing on the things that we can define as being priorities, including equity, including, you know, saving as much money as we can, including prioritizing those things that are meaningful, I think that that's probably, in this environment, the best we're going to do right now. We're going to have to come back, we're going to have to revisit this. It's not going to be perfect. This is our first, you know, swing at it. And we'll just do the best that we can. But there's no perfection here, because we're guessing.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Michelle just said. And I think it's some of what Jess and Brian and others have said as well. This is, it's a budget. It's not, we're not spending the money today. And it's kind of like, you know, we have this giant balloon, and we're going to squeeze it in one place, it's going to pop out someplace else. And this year, much more than, than any other. And so we have to look at the overall dollars and, you know, weigh the risks and rewards. And this, it's just an exceptionally challenging time. If we don't use our, you know, we bank the cap, it is not lost forever. We can recapture some of it, but you lose some of it as well, because you haven't had it for the last, you know, whatever that period of time is that you didn't use it. And we need to educate our students. And costs go up. And yes, maybe there are savings. And to Daphna's point, and I think other people have echoed it as well, we want to save that money. Having a budget doesn't mean we can't try and save the money within that budget, right? So we allocate money. That money, every year, gets moved around in different, you know, line items, because we never, this is not a precise science at any time. And this year is a perfect example of that. But if we can save money during the year, let's do it. I kind of think about waiting nine days. I understand the sentiment. The way I think about it is, I was not on the committee, I'm, you know, I'm not on finance. I trust the process. I think everyone here has said this, that everyone, Matt and your team and the committee has done an unbelievable job. They've made an excellent presentation, an excellent budget. Obviously, these issues have been thought about, about, by the people who are on the committee and who study this and look at it and go line by line. And so from my perspective, as an outsider to the committee and to the process, I trust the process, because I trust the people that are doing it. And I also trust that as we move forward, if there is our additional savings during the year to come, they'll come as well. And that, you know, I think the uncertainty is not going to be much less eight days from now, that we're going to know, oh, look, you know, there's a couple more, you know, pencils to be sharpened. And so I don't, personally, I don't see the, the need to wait. I understand it. But I don't think it means that we have to not save money if we find it afterwards as well. So that's kind of my perspective on that.
Thank you.
Beth?
Okay, I will add one more concept that we talked about in our hours of discussion yesterday, because I really, it was one of the best, I think, conversations we've had on my time at the board. It was very, we really, all five of, six, five of us just came from every perspective and went back and forth and really tried to find a compromise. And I think we did. But one of the things we talked about was financial resiliency in a time of uncertainty. We don't know what's coming. And we are responsible for continuing to educate these children and for being ready to deal with whatever happens in terms of restarting. And restarting is so important to our community. I mean, we need to be, we need to do it well. We need to have the resources. And if for some reason, you know, next year, when we're doing the budget, we discover that we can save and we have a little extra, then we can try to take the levy down again. But I don't think next year, you know, to say we're going to push this and bank it, we're not going to come back next year and go at the taxpayers with a higher rate. I think next year, people may be even hurting more than they are this year. If this is anything like, you know, what people think it is, it's going to last a couple of years. And so we need to think about our ability to continue to maintain the education that we need to provide for the kids. And to, you know, I hate to raise taxes, but we had trouble just making the district function with the cap, right? We have trouble functioning. We were happy to get through this budget in the old snapshot without a reduction in force that we had to do last year. So I'm just concerned that we need to put ourselves in the best stance to be ready for whatever shocks come. And when you look back to 2010, and you think about what happened to the schools in 2010, when they lost $2 million with two, two weeks to adjust, it was enormous. There was enormous loss of jobs, loss of programs, a disruption. And so a million or $2 less in aid this year, even, even starting in July with the extraordinary special ed, it will make, it will be a big shock to us, and we'll have to be able to adjust. And so I'm just concerned that we have to be careful with how much we, we cut back at this point.
But I'm not sure if Daphna's saying we need to cut. She's saying, can we have another nine days? You know, let's, and I think we should do that. We have the time. And, and, you know, legally, we don't have to give it to them until next week. We have a meeting on Tuesday. You know, I think we should give everybody an option to, you know, voice what they want and look at what they want.
I just make a very temporary suggestion, which is, there are a number of very thoughtful members of the public who may have some good perspectives and comments to share with us. And I wonder if we just want to, you know, listen to what they have to say and then ask this question again about whether it makes sense to take the nine days.
I just want to add that, right, I want to know, you said there's $253,000 in cuts. I would like to see where that, that is. I would like to see where that's being achieved. And so, I mean, I didn't ask for the nine days, Debbie, Dan did. But I mean, I support it so that I can get more clarity as to what's being proposed.
Okay, so we're going to open it up to the attendees. So someone's raising their hand. So I'm going to call on that first person. I will click on you, Chris Klein, and you can speak.
They're muted, Matt.
They're muted, Matt.
Yep, I am trying to unmute them. I think they have to unmute themselves. I keep clicking unmute. Chris, can you hear me?
Michelle or Beth, just want to review the amount of time people can take.
You want to do it?
So I'm going to go to Kip. She raised her hand, Kip Cherry. I'm going to...
Yeah, just to, before anyone speaks, a reminder that we ask everyone to keep their comments to three minutes, out of respect for the time of everyone here and everyone, give everyone a chance to speak. We ask you to state your name and address. And we note that this is public comment, and we will not necessarily be responding to questions, but we'd like to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Right, so I'm Kip Cherry, 24 Dempsey. And I've noted a number of things in the chat. I missed out on the hand-raising thing. I was a little late coming in. I do think that there are a lot of unknowns, and I'm very concerned about accessing the reserves. So I think that having some additional flexibility in the budget is a good thing. I think it's going to be really tough when you all come together to figure out where to cut, because I think that probably will happen. And I'm very concerned about the economy of the community. I think our business district has taken a big hit, and it's not totally clear as to how that or when that is going to ripple through. And I'm sure there are many people hurting that we don't know about, because it's, we don't have any information as to who has lost their job and who hasn't. So it's all a big unknown out there. I did send a question right at the beginning regarding computers. And I, I'll throw that out there. You don't have to answer that right now. But I was wondering how you handle kids who don't have access to computers or access to the web, and how you've been financing that this year, and how you might need to finance it in the future. So that's just an additional thing. And I would also just make a comment from observing my neighbors who have kids who have been running around a lot, and just want... and just watching the body language of the parents. And what I'm getting out of that is that they don't feel they can replace teachers. They don't have the, uh, the, the power. The kids don't listen to them the same way as they do to their teachers. And so, um, I think a lot of the kids have been kind of running around and even when the parent says, you know, would you sit down and do your homework? It's not totally successful. And the parents are not necessarily totally successful at answering the questions or, or clarifying the instructions. So I think it's been very, um, challenging for their parents and I think they're very worried about their kids falling behind a little bit. And I know that's universal all over the country, but, um, I think that that is a real concern on their part is just keeping the kids going to the next grade and, and not affecting their long-term future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, David Rosenfeld. You have to unmute.
Hi guys.
Oh, hey.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, it's good to see all you guys. Um, I, I'm finding the whole, the presentation fascinating and, um, I'm hoping though you don't mind if I jump in about something else. Um, and then I'm gonna keep listening to the budget discussion, but, um, I need to get to bed tonight. Uh, I wanted to check in with you guys, um, just to, first of all, I wanna say congratulations, Steve and, and Annie, um, on your upcoming retirements. Secondly, can you see me?
We can see you in the tiger.
Oh, good, good. My hair's an absolute mess and so I, I'm glad you can't actually see me. I wanted, I, I wanted to, um, to check in because, just to give you some feedback regarding the remote learning. Um, and one of the obstacles I'm having, I'm, I really, um, I'm doing my best to try to stay in communication with all the students I work with. And one of the board policies is making it tricky and it may not be something that you guys are able to, to change. Um, but we as staff members aren't supposed to be communicating with students unless we're using their, their school emails. And I think that's a great idea. Um, and generally, it makes a lot of sense because obviously it keeps, um, everything in the system. But it, it does make it really hard when you're trying to reach students, some of whom aren't attending school regularly and aren't checking their emails. Um, and I, I feel like it takes away a really important, um, avenue for being able to check in with students. Um, I, I was hoping that there might be able to be some modification that could be made to the policy, maybe something that allowed us to send emails to both the schools, the students' school email and their personal email. Certainly, it totally makes sense that any email staff members send should be coming from their school email address. To me, that means it's all in the system, whatever we're saying. Um, but one of the things I find working at the high school level is I spend a lot of time trying to help kids learn what an email is. Um, they all know how to text and I, um, I have been using cell phones to reach students by phone, but I don't text students because it just, to me, the boundary issues there are, are too complicated. Um, but I feel like, um, you know, part of what I'm doing with ninth and 10th grade is helping them learn how to write an email appropriately and actually write full words without just see you later. Um, and we get to a point where they'll check their personal email, but they, they oftentimes won't check their school email. Um, and so I was, I was hoping maybe there could be a modification that could be made to that policy so that maybe it's that we send emails to both the student email and the personal email. Certainly, I also understand having restrictions. Sometimes the student, uh, personal email names are not the most appropriate in the world and certainly I won't use that kind of an email, so there might be expectations with that too. Um, but my biggest worry is that there are kids I wanna be able to reach and, and I can't reach them. And, um, and phone numbers may not be working, school, uh, home phone numbers may, may not be working. So I, I didn't know if there was a way to make some kind of exception or, and maybe that's, I mean, I think it would be really helpful to teachers generally, but, but definitely to child study team members and, um, school counselors to be able to, to use, uh, those personal emails. Um, I think, I think that's, oh yeah, the one other point I wanted to make with, with texting and even cellphone calls, I just feel more comfortable with the email exchange sometimes because there is documentation there. And there really isn't, um, when we're trying to have a cellphone call one-on-one with a student or, um, again, I don't text. But, but that's a worry with texting too. So I'm gonna stop talking, but thank you guys for all your hard work and I'm sorry for interrupting the discussion, but.
Oh, not at all. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Is there any other, uh, one out there in the audience that has a question about the budget? You just have to raise your hand. You go down to the bottom of the screen.
Cause Chris did before. Can he not open up?
No, I, I enabled him to talk. He asked to unmute himself down at the bottom left corner of your screen, Chris, if you're there, um, whoever, I, you know.
While we're waiting for budget participants, can I, Steve, um, with regard to David's question, is that something, I think copying a student's personal email and their board email, um, would solve that problem?
Their district email address? Yeah, and actually, and that's a, um, a, a helpful solution, uh, potential solution. We would need to talk, look at that in policy. Um, I saw Jess taking notes, so maybe that's something that.
And I, I can, let me just add to that too, that, um, students often have their school email forwarded to their personal email. So the student can do that. If we can tell the student to set that up, then it automatically goes to their personal. But, but the teacher stays in a, in a.
Maybe.
Yeah, very helpful, a very helpful, uh, question and suggestion.
So it doesn't appear that anyone else has a question on the budget, um, in the public?
Okay. So, say if, if Chris Klein is having trouble, it, could, could that person send through the chat the notes they would like to say?
Absolutely.
Other options if, if it's a technological.
They can send a chat to the whole panel if they want.
Let's see if Chris has sent us.
Well, they didn't raise their hand again. They might have just checked the raise their hand before, uh.
I thought, I thought they had sent a question earlier in the presentation.
There was a question in the chat?
Yeah, from Chris Klein.
Oh, yes. Right, will there be layoffs and if so, how many?
Ah, good catch, Susan. Soon, uh, no, we're not laying off people in this budget. Not in the first snapshot. I, I just don't think we can promise. No, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen. Actually, you're right. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, so there's no more public comment? Um, does the board have any further discussion or we would move on to the item J1, adoption of the final budget?
Can I just ask as a logistical question, if we were to take extra time, we can't meet obviously as a group unless we notice the budget is a, so I, I think part of this is that everyone on the board would like to be part of the discussion. So in my mind, this is only helpful if we're able to notice public meetings. So are we thinking we would be noticing Monday, Wednesday and Thursday night as well as the Tuesday night meeting we already have? I'm, I'm just asking, if we want more time, how are we using it? That's my question. We edit it to Tuesday. Like, we wouldn't have to go through all this again, right?
Yeah.
Can I just have a suggestion? Let's, for procedures, let's first have a motion and then we can discuss this as part of the budget item. So can I have a motion to discuss the adoption of the final budget?
So.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll move for the adoption of the budget.
For the adoption?
The discussion.
And second, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, and now do we have any discussion?
So I would just offer a motion to table the budget approval till next, until next Tuesday night.
Do I have a second?
What?
Debbie.
Wait, would you only have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, you have to amend.
You'd have to offer a friendly amendment or, you know.
Well, I thought Brian offered a motion to.
Approve.
Approve the budget. So I was mending his motion.
I was just trying to get the discussion going.
No, I think we've had the discussion. So we're either gonna, uh, amend the motion to adopt, uh, or, or, or not.
Move to ta, you can move to table.
So I'm moving to table the motion to adopt the budget till next Tuesday night.
And De, and then Debbie seconded that motion.
And my, my question then is if we can discuss on Tuesday night, what would need to happen between now and Tuesday night? In order to have enough information to vote on a budget, because then we're down to two days if we don't have enough information. So I just wanna make sure we're all clear about what happens in the next week.
The two-day thing doesn't work cuz.
Right, we would have to notice it. Yeah.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to go through any of this. We would just try our hardest to see if we can identify some savings. And then next Tuesday night, we, 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 without a presentation, without a public discussion, we vote to adopt whatever we come up.
Matt.
Betsy's point is, what's gonna happen in the meantime? If we're all not gonna be part of the conversation, all that's gonna happen is that the finance committee could meet again. And it goes back to, I think, some of what I said earlier. They've done great work and they've drilled down and they've done what they think is appropriate to bring it to us now. I don't think they brought it to us now thinking, oh, we, you know, we really need another week, cuz if they did, they would have waited the extra week. So we can't meet as a full board to discuss all of this unless we notice a meeting, as Betsy said. So procedurally, we're not gonna all get to discuss this again. It will come down to the finance committee meeting sometime in the next five days.
No, there were emails, emails and emails.
Um, so I, I, up until this point, Peter, I haven't been able to provide feedback and I would like to see, and I don't need to be involved in the meetings. I would like to see where the, but, where the committee is recommending that the, the $253,000 be cut from. And then I'd also like to see where else, um, you know, if we have additional, additional needs. I would actually like to see more money moved to curriculum and instruction. So that's what I'm asking for. And they could come back and say, we can't do that. And that's enough, but I, I do wanna see where the 253s.
So I, let me just. It's not how the budget really works, like, right, so right now you wanna move all the money to one particular pocket, but then as everything changes, we move it around within the budget anyway. I mean, I've been talking about how the school district budget works, uh, Brian.
Why do we, I understand how the budget works, but why do we have categories? And I want, I, I'd like to see where, you know, where these, you know, you cut, you know, the tax levy increase down to 1.75. What, I mean, what, what is, what does that represent?
Brian, do you wanna speak?
Well, so, um, I'm trying to think of what we could do and I'm mindful of not overburdening Matt. Um, but I, I don't know how productive it is to kind of get in the line-by-line thing cuz unlike municipal government, we can transfer from one line to another, right, Matt?
Yes.
Yes. So, um, in a way, we have the totality of the budget and we have the opportunity as we go forward to revise our priorities, but we may need to revise the whole budget. What I could imagine us doing, and Dan, you know, give this some thought, is to look at a couple of scenarios at possible levels of debt reduction. Um, maybe Matt can put, and I'm just talking out loud, maybe Matt, you know, can do the wild guess about what savings we might have this year. Maybe Steve and Betsy and possibly student achievement can, can do a better job of inventorying the likely costs we may incur when the students return to school. Um, and, and then when we talk about 1.75%, you know, each, each move of 25 basis points is about $200,000. So I, I'm just asking if we had that information, um, would it be, would it be helpful? I still think in the end, we're guessing, um, and it's a balancing act about, uh, we, we, we're trying to show some faith with the taxpayers this year. I think we'd like to do that next year too, if at all possible. But the deeper we go this year, the harder it's going to be to stay away from the 2% or even a higher amount next year. So it's, it's, on the one hand, I think we can provide more information. On the other hand, I'm not sure how useful that information is. But I wanna be responsive to the, to my fellow members who, who have some remaining questions and, and want some more time.
Well, and the other thing I just wanna tell Peter, we thought about moving it to next week. We, we did, we talked about that. So that wasn't out of the, um, realm. Um, I just, I wanna make sure everybody feels comfortable because it is a really odd thing. And, and maybe Daphna could sit in, you know, and I can sit out on the, um, finance committee on Monday.
Yeah, and I would ask it because I also am a little like Daphna and I'm even in less of a good position cuz this is my first budget. Um, and to have changes this late in the budget to not look at, like, if we have questions that we could share with the broader group so that we can get educated, you know, even if we can't comment on them, we could at least get educated a little on what some of the thought processes are.
Email as a larger group, we can't email on this as a full board. That's a meeting. Um, so we have to.
But if someone, so, so if someone, I just wanted to understand, if someone asks a question, the answer can't be given to everyone.
Well, let me, let me just wonder about another thing, Beth. Um, we don't actually have a finance committee meeting on Monday. We have a facilities committee meeting, which is likely to shift. But, um, we, we could.
Then I'm free.
Yeah, we, so that's what, that's what I'm wondering. Um, are we able to have a whole meeting on Monday or Tuesday? Um, that, uh, the public would be allowed to, you know, listen in? Um, and, does that help?
I think there's a simpler way to do it. So if Daphna has a question, she sends it to Matt. Matt answers it and then CCs the whole board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Has a question, then she says it, sends it to Matt. He answers it and sends it to the whole board.
The way that really will work is if Matt does it as a blind CC because otherwise someone is invariably going to respond to all and then we have a problem. So.
No, don't respond.
We're good. With, that's why I happen, that rarely happens. We're good.
I guess, I guess what I, I just, I've been hearing Matt say the last couple of days is that we're guessing and a budget is a moving thing and he's done his best to put a, a snapshot for us together at the moment, but we have all these unknowns that are really large. And I know we talked about this the other day, but I, I just, I don't see how we're gonna get any closer to it.
Are we really asking the question, like, is there a way to find another 0.25? Like, that's really the question that's being asked. It's not line by line. But are we comfortable or not going down another 0.25?
Can I just offer, uh, some comments to, to frame the, the, the question that you're posing? Like, do we, do we look for another 0.25? Um, how do we, how do we grapple with the uncertainty in which we're taking this, this snapshot at this point in time? And I really do appreciate the, the board looking at the economic health of our community and saying that because of the lost jobs, because of the, um, the, um, business owners and the, the lower in, decrease in ratables, because of that economic concern that we are gonna reduce the, the tax levy um, from just over 2% to 1.75. At the same time, um, as we think about the physical health of our whole community, the emotional health and the academic health of our kids, but even just the physical health of our community, when our students return, we're, we're bringing thousands of students back into our building and we have to do that safely cuz they're going back out into households. Um, and we wanna make sure that we have everything in place to ensure that safety. And if we're looking at social distancing mandates and suddenly we, we can only have one kid on a seat on a bus and we have to double our bus routes, or as someone, as Susan mentioned, we have split sessions and we have to increase transportation, or we have to increase cleaning protocols because now we have to clean those classrooms thoroughly twice a day. Um, there are, and then we have the, the mental health piece and the academic supports for our kids, but there are going to be expenses that are unforeseen, have never faced a school district before, um, that we don't know yet. And there will likely be, um, requirements from the state that come down that we don't know. And we have an obligation to, um, to look at the economic health and to respond to that. And I think this budget does that. At the same time, we also have a responsibility to consider the physical health of our whole community as we bring kids back. And there will be expenses associated with that that we are trying to anticipate, but will not be able to do within a few days. Um, that's why we're having the, the group meet that we've talked about. So I just wanna caution the, the whole, the board to be looking at this from, from all sides and, and, and continuing to be responsible in our partnership to the community.
Yeah, no, Steve, we talked a lot about that and honestly, we'll never have a budget that can support all that. I, I feel the state is gonna have to help with that, or there's gonna have to be loans we can take. We, we never will have a budget for that. That, that would be just, you know, no. We, we never will have a budget for that. That, that would be just, you know, nobody else can come to school. Yeah, we can't. I mean, that's ridiculous. But I, I wanna make sure everybody feels comfortable and we have this time. I, I don't think we're, we're not hurting our process, we're not telling anybody we don't feel comfortable with it. We're making sure that, you know, we do feel comfortable moving it to the next week. And I'm happy to let Daphna, you know, sit in Finance, because I have gone over this. And I know how she feels, because last year I wasn't on Finance, and this was why I was so frustrated, you know? And, and now that I've been able to ask all my questions and get in there and understand. But I, I think we have to do our due diligence. Um, yeah, we have no idea. I mean, we can't, we can't buy masks for everybody, we can't afford any of that stuff, it's ridiculous. So I would really hope that we could move it to next week and, and like, you know, the certain questions, but also seeing where are we cutting, because we say we're cutting the budget, not people, but like to see a little more detail for everyone.
So, Madam President, why don't you bring the amended motion to a vote? It's 10:30 and I know everybody's getting tired and I think the board.
We're meeting.
And the staff, so I, I commend everyone for their hard work and professionalism.
So, I guess we're bringing to a vote the amended motion, the amendment. The amendment is to delay and to table this until next Tuesday. Can I ask one more question of Matt as a process matter? Does this, I see you frowning, and I know we have to go to the county. And I wanna make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a spot where we, um, procedurally can't get it done. Can you confirm that this is something that would work? From an approval point of view, from a deadline, if we were to table this to next Tuesday?
Yeah.
I think you're muted.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
It would work, okay. So.
And can I just ask another question? Would we then just be meeting in Finance and then speaking as a full board? Or would we notice a Finance meeting that would be open to the board and the public to really engage rather than just, you know, bringing it to the board Tuesday night?
I think, I think we're, we're tabling this, because the Finance Committee had a unanimous recommendation, and now I think that we're rethinking that. And I don't know that we're getting questions from the public, I think it's more that the board wants to be comfortable.
I just mean, if we notice a meeting, we have to speak about the budget in public. So I'm saying if we noticed a Finance meeting and invited the full board, it would have to then be open to the.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's what I meant, yeah.
I, yeah.
You know, I, I would absolutely love to, um, complete this tonight in part, because I want Matt to sleep a little better. But, um, you know, if members of the board wanna take the time, I really don't see a reason why we shouldn't take that time and let, uh, let's see if we, if anything happens over the next few days. And if anybody has a great question, um, they should ask it. And, you know, I don't know the schedule of the other Finance Committee members, but mine's pretty flexible these days. And, uh, you know, Monday, any, pretty much, we, I can send an email around to see if people are available.
Okay.
You can always email Matt, he can share an answer with the whole board.
Okay, so I'd like to call the question, and that is whether we vote to, um, table the approval of the final budget until next Tuesday, May 5th? Um, Matt, do you wanna do a roll call on that?
You don't, I don't think you really need to do anything, do you? If you table it, you just don't vote on it.
But you have to vote to table, but you, I think you have to vote to table, Michelle.
Yeah. Beth Baron.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia. Betsy Baglia.
Yes, sorry, I was muted.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Beth Deutsch.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Motion to table the budget passes.
Tabled.
Okay.
What, it wasn't on my bucket, bucket list, but that's why I discovered motion to table. My life is enriched.
Birthday is next, uh, Tues- Tuesday, so trust me, the last thing I wanted was to extend the meeting.
Okay, so our next item is J2, the tuition rates, uh, which is an action item.
So that has to be tabled also, because that's really part of the budget, and it's, uh, not a required, so I'll just have that both be tabled, the budget and tuition, J1 and 2.
Okay. Um, now we have committee reports. It is 10:30 at night. Do we wanna, um, provide each other with the committee reports and, and the public in writing?
Yes.
Would that make sense? So could you submit by, I guess, what, what would make sense, by next? What day is it, Tuesday? So could we have those to each other and perhaps posted to the agenda?
Just send them to Matt?
Send them to Matt.
Okay.
As an alternate, um, since we are meeting in a week, I'm not sure how many committees will be meeting, but we, we could, you know, just do the same thing in a week.
We have a lot on next week's, next Tuesday's becoming quite crowded. But yes, we could, we could either, um, give them next week, or if we find we don't have the time, we then have them posted. But perhaps you could have them written up and, and put onto the agenda for next week's meeting. How's that?
Sure.
Item L. Let's see. That's public comment. Uh. Do we have another public comment? Okay.
On, uh, non-budget, anything agenda or non-agenda, anyone in the public, raise your hand and I will allow you to speak and ask the question. Going once, going twice, up. Oh, Kip, you're unmuted, go ahead, Kip. Cherry.
Well, I just have a quick question. Um, how is the public going to get the information that you all are getting regarding where the cuts occurred? Is it gonna be on the website then?
Well, it will be posted some point prior to the agenda. I guess I can post it inside the agenda would be one easy way, as a public attachment to the agenda.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? If not, we're moving on. We're moving on to M1, which is the first reading of policies. There's a gender identity and expression policy, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Peter, second. Jess. Okay, we've got, um, all in favor of the, uh, accepting for the first reading of the, the, um, policy on gender identity. Can we show our hands, or do we have to do a roll call?
Do we need it for first reading?
Yeah.
It's an action item.
Okay.
Just so everyone can hear us, Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Beth Deutsch.
Yes, and thank you to Daphna for all her work on this.
Betsy Calber-Baglia.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. That takes us to M2, which is the recommendation, um, of a number of policies for a second reading as part of the policy manual transition begun in 2017. This is the last chapter. Um, we've accelerated our review of policies not yet updated, and the resolution is to pass these for a second read. Can I have a motion? Jess.
Second.
Peter? And then is there any discussion?
I just had a question. Um, Jess, I know you said you guys are gonna do all the pronouns, I was just curious when.
We're gonna start that soon, we'll have to get that out to, uh, school boards. I'm gonna, um, have Patty get that going, um, shortly.
Thank you.
At our last meeting, actually, to do it.
I'm sorry, what?
We'd actually requested that of, directly of her at our last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
In process.
Um, any other questions? Okay, um, can we have a roll call?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Beth Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Then, and we're now on the personnel items, and most of these are consents. The first one is appointments, I'll read the title, if you have anything to say, just, um, interrupt me. And one is appointments, and two is retire, well, in retirement, we have to say something, so we'll stop there. Retirement, yes.
Did you wanna go, Betsy?
Uh, sure, Annie, I'm gonna save, uh, most of my comments for June, uh, because we have two months more of work ahead of us.
Lots of good to do.
You haven't stopped for a second. Um, I just wanna say it's been really, truly a pleasure to work with you the last three years. I'm looking forward to the next two months and thank you for all you've done for our district.
Daphna?
I'm gonna go with the tradition that we say everything we have to say when the person announces their retirement, so. Bear with me, yes. Uh, so, I've had, I've had the privilege to know Annie, both as a parent of students at Littlebrook Elementary School, where she was the principal for 14 years, and as a board member who worked with her in her capacity as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. One thread in both of these positions was Annie's clear care for children. As a parent, when I went to Annie with a concern, she would invite me into her office and sit down with a notepad, ready to take notes so she could take action. As a board member, I worked closely with Annie on the Student Achievement Committee. Any question or concern I had was always addressed with urgency. As a parent, I will miss Annie's, uh, steady hand, the guided learning in our district. As a board member, I am saddened that Annie's leaving. Uh, Annie's retirement will leave a big hole in our district. Are those tears, Annie?
Yes, I know. I, 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 I think I am in a, I think I am in a bit of denial over it all at this point. And, and besides, like as Betsy said, the work ahead, there's quite a bit in the next two months and we'll be at it. But I do wanna just take it in, just a minute to just say thank you again to this Board of Ed and to, and to previous Boards of Ed, just for the opportunity to serve the Princeton community. It has been, um, a, a gift and a blessing in my life. And, you know, I've been, I've been proud to be here. We've been really sidetracked by COVID and quarantine. But I know that Princeton will continue the work we've been doing to ensure access and equity and opportunity for all kids. And I like to think of it as, you know, we need to be open, both, um, open the doors, but also our hearts and minds to allowing kids to bring, uh, their gifts to the table and then making sure that they have a seat at that table. And I think that is behind, you know, everything, all of our work. Um, and I thank the board for that always being your primary concern. So, thank you. Best of luck to all of you as well.
I wasn't done, Annie, though.
Oh, sorry. I am sorry, Daphna.
That's okay, 'cause maybe I could still make you cry. So, um, I, I always say that Littlebrook Elementary School is the best thing to ever happen to my children, and it was, uh, Annie's leadership that made that happen, so thank you. And finally, I will miss you, Annie, and I wish you a happy and long term.
Thank you. I will miss all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Debbie?
Can I go? Yeah. Wanna thank Annie for her 17 years with the district, and Annie was the principal at Littlebrook while both my boys started their educational journey. I also got to know and work with Annie as a member of the Littlebrook PTO, and I've had the pleasure of working with Annie as a member of Student Achievement. The Student Achievement Committee has thrown a lot at Annie. And like she said, she likes a challenge, and we challenged her big time. Best of luck in your retirement, and thank you, Annie, for developing a passion for learning in all our students.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Ryan. I'll be, I'll be brief, although I may have something to say in June. Which is that Annie succeeded a, a talented, beloved predecessor. And when that happens, you know, the community's always wondering, you know, I, you know, I hope this works out. And it's one of those cases, I don't know, you know, what the model is, but when you've got, you know, one, you know, A+, and then a year later, you, you realize that you've got a different A+ who's enriching the community in different ways. And, uh, I'm gonna have to gather intel from the three McDonald children who she got to, uh, hopefully not discipline, but at least, um, a per, you know, be their principal. So thank you, Annie, and, um, it's, uh, well, it's a great loss for the district. Your presence here, um, was, uh, so wonderful and such a great win that, uh, well, you know, both, it'll be easy to remember you just by cherishing the memories that we, we have when we look at our kids.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Annie, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more where that, that came from over the next couple of weeks and into June, so thank you.
And I am tearing up, Daphna.
Get, get your tissues, well, they're hard to find. Okay, we're going to, and two, leaves of absence. And three, leaves of absence, and four, resignations. And five, transfer reassignments. Six, student services, seven, personnel items, eight, student placements. Then we go to, oh, one, professional consulting services, assisted technology. That's an action item. Matt?
Not sure why.
Okay, we need a motion, or can it go into consent?
Unless anyone asks for it, it'll be consent.
Okay, then, um, P1, financial reports. P2, travel and related expenses. And then that brings us to the consent vote, can I have a motion?
I move, Dan.
Dan, and then Peter a second. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Beth Deutsch.
Yes, she's in mute.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay. That brings us to our last public comment item. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Anyone out there, just raise your hand.
It's a bunch of all-stars.
I think we wore them out.
I, I hope they're still awake.
Going once, going twice. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. And that brings us, um, to the end of the meeting. You know, I do appreciate working with all of you. Everybody thinks so, so deeply on everything and cares so much, and we are spending so much time together. I think we're all getting sick of each other, but we're getting work done, so, thank you, everyone. And I think this is it until next, uh, next Tuesday, right?
Uh, we'll see each other.
But someone goes tomorrow.
Tomorrow. There's always tomorrow.
Four hours.
Always tomorrow.
To conclude, to.
Can I have a motion to conclude?
I move.
Dan, second. Jess, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you, Matt.